Madam Clerk, are we prepared?
We are, Madam Vice Mayor. If you'd like to get rolling, we're ready to go.
Okay. But we are getting ready to start, and Madam Mayor is walking in as we speak.
All right, good morning, everybody, and welcome to the May 4th. You know how hard it is to not say "May 4th" be with you.
May 4th.
May the 4th be with you.
Yes.
It's overused. Meeting of the Reno City Council, special meeting, Budget Workshops. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. And if we could get Mr. Paco LaChoy to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Councilmember Breckus?
Here.
Doerr?
Here.
Delgado, absent at this time. Weber?
Here.
Jarden?
Here.
Reese, absent at this time. Shevy? Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
Send it back to you for public comment.
Thank you so much. Our first item today is general public comment. It should be noted, for those in the audience, that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Please note that council may not take action on any matter not agendized. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior, and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. Our first public commenter today is Paco LaChoy.
I need specs like the Vice Mayor. Good morning. My name is Paco LaChoy, and I'm chairman of the Reno Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. I'm here today to let council know what the committee has been up to since today is part of Older Americans Month. This year's theme is Age My Way. With communication and engagement, the two areas of concentration for the committee, May is our major engagement time. We opened the inaugural senior artist exhibit and show at the Historic McKinley Arts and Culture Center on April 25th. We started the project with no idea of what the participation level would be. We're happy to say that we have 54 artists with over 120 items of art that will be on display. They range in age from 60 to 97 years old. Due to the overwhelming response, we took one piece from each of the artists to display in the East Wing Gallery for the entire showing of the exhibit, which is April 25th through June the 3rd. In order to accommodate all the art that we have, we're having a three-day special showing in the auditorium of all the rest of the art on the 9th, 10th, 11th. Also, there will be an artist reception on the night of the 10th at 5:00 PM if anyone from the council would like to attend. Other events in May include a sit-and-fit class that we worked with Parks and Rec to put on. It's every Thursday from 9 until 10. Councilwoman Weber is having a luncheon at Sierra Sage Golf Course on May 9th at 11:30. Our Elder Art Engagement Day is Wednesday, May 11th at 10:00 AM at McKinley Arts. The annual staff abuse for seniors, which is a joint effort between all three senior committees and Washoe County Human Services, is May 19th at the Target and Sparks. Another big event for us is Senior Day at the Aces, Saturday, May 22nd. The city has graciously given us the suite, and we'd like to invite council to let us know if you would like to come and be part of the action on Senior Day. We are giving tickets to anyone that has a 60% scholarship with the City of Reno Parks and Rec Department, a free ticket. So we're looking after our low-end fixed-income seniors that might not have the opportunity to go. We have two ice cream socials, one at Neal Road and one at Paradise Park. Neal Road is May 25th, and Paradise Park is May 27th. The event, Older Americans Month, closes with our sock hop and ice cream social at the Washoe County Senior Center on May 26th from 2 until 5, and that's a joint effort between us and the Sanford Center. In terms of communication, we have a quarterly newsletter connecting seniors, which all of you should have a copy at the DIAHS. Our radio program has developed quite an audience. We even have a listener in Sweden because they can get it over the Internet. So our program is called We Are Community. It's a program about seniors, for seniors, by seniors, and it can be heard every Thursday at 12:30 on 1060 AM and 93.7 FM. The program is also available on Reno.gov/seniors. Seniors can communicate with our committee through our email, which is seniors@reno.com. And also, we now have a City of Reno phone number specifically for the Senior Citizen Advisor Committee at 775-560-2094. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. La... Is it LaChoy?
LaChoy.
LaChoy. What was the date of that baseball game?
The 22nd of May.
Oh, okay.
Sunday.
Yeah.
Yes.
And before you leave us, I think you and I are still working on scheduling a nature hike.
We are.
Yeah, through one of our parks.
The luncheon on the May 9th is at 11:00.
Oh, 11:00. They told me 11:30.
Okay.
We'll fix that. Thank you.
All right, Madam Mayor. And with that, we have no additional public comment, and we did not receive any written correspondence.
Okay. And we're going to jump right into approval of the agenda. Make it a motion. I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, presentation, item B1.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Mayor and council members, today we have for you on the agenda talk of the fee schedule and then also the capital improvement plan. And, sorry, Vicky Van Buren, for the record, interim finance director. Just forget. We have in the waiting room for you today Jerry Wolfe and Cindy Sconce. They're with management MGT Consulting, and they did our fee schedule study. It's a citywide user fee study, and it was completed in March. And they are here to go over that and discuss what they found out and also discuss the different things that they did as far as talking with the departments and looking at the fees and such. So I want to go ahead and have Madam Clerk go to their presentation, if we could.
Vicky, will they be sharing the screen and doing their own presentation?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
We can share our screen if you don't have the presentation available.
Yep, if one of the two of you would like to share your screen and run the presentation, that would be great.
Okay.
Cindy, do you want to share the screen? Please. Thank you. I'm Jerry Wolfe. I'm a director with MGT Consulting, and I'm here along with Cindy Sconce, also a director with MGT Consulting. And we led the presentation along with members of our staff. First off, I'd like to compliment the support we got from the Finance Department, Vicky Van Buren, Mark Stone, Matthew Taylor. They were instrumental in helping move the project along to a timely completion. Okay? So the project really involved three steps. The first was to do a full cost allocation plan. We've got a slide about that a little bit later. But basically, where we distribute the costs of central administrative functions within the city, we distribute those costs to the various departments that are delivering direct services to the public. The second part of it was a comprehensive user fee study where we incorporate the information in the full cost allocation plan, along with their department-by-department analyses of the service costs. We combine the two types of information. And the third is the cost of services report, where we present our findings and conclusions and recommendations to the city. We delivered our final report to Finance on March 18th. So the methodology we followed is basically, we start off with a full list of the city's ordinances related to the various fees that they have on record. So these are usually listed by department, and they describe the fee and the fee amount enacted by the city council. In some cases, we identify services where there is no fee, and the departments believe that a fee is appropriate. Okay? So we then go and work with the individual departments to, and we interview primarily supervisors, to find out what the level of effort is by various staff positions to support each type of fee level. We don't do time sheets. We really rely on interviews with the supervisors, because the supervisors typically, you know, they've worked the jobs, they know what's involved in performing each kind of service, and they're a very reliable source. We also try to avoid time sheets, because not all transactions, not all services occur, you know, during the year, or they may be very seasonal. So we may not have data points if we want to do time sheets. So interviews with the supervisors are really key. So since in any kind of governmental organization, the largest cost factor is personnel-related, we focus a lot of time on our interviews with the supervisors. We also look at non-personnel expenditures. Some of those are administrative, but sometimes departments have expenses that are related to specific fees, so we treat those accordingly. We analyze the cost and associate the cost with individual fees. We compare those fees with the revenues, and then review our findings with the departments so we can discuss their recommendations about fee adjustments. Fee adjustments are up to the city council, but the departments may have input on how they'd like to establish fee levels or just current fees. We also did a peer review. And it's not showing up on this slide, but we did do a peer review at the request of the city, where we looked at about 10 of your peers, some cities, some counties, you know, many in Nevada. And we selected one or two services from key departments within the city of Reno, and we selected those services, which are fairly common services, and then did a research study looking at the set of peers to see what they would charge, what they currently charge for the current, you know, for the like services. We did find that, you know, there was no, we couldn't draw a conclusion that Reno was overcharging or undercharging compared to the peers. Peer comparisons are difficult, too, because not all of the peers, you know, have the same service, and they often have very different fee structures. So it's hard to draw really any conclusions or themes from the peer survey. So we then organized all of our findings and recommendations and submitted our report to Finance. Cindy?
Thank you, Jerry. So this slide just shows a brief overview of what went into the full cost allocation plan. So you see on the one side, we have central services costs that were allocated out to the receiving departments, and this became part of the hourly rate calculation that we did, part of the overhead.
Can I just ask, can you enlarge your slide a bit? We don't have the printout here. It's just a little bit hard to read the numbers.
Sure, no problem. Let me see if we can just...
Control roll usually works if you press control and roll your mouse, or there might be a Zoom feature up there.
Or the lower right-hand corner of the slide.
Yep. One moment.
Okay, thank you.
That better?
Yep, you might have gone too far, but...
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So this slide here just shows some preliminary results at a very high level for each of the departments that we looked at. So you see the departments or categories that we looked at under user fee departments. That column A, cost of user fee services, that represents us taking the productive hourly rate times the time estimate to provide the service, times the annual volume that we received for that service. And as a total, you can see what it's actually costing to provide those services on an annual basis. The next column, column B, represents what the current revenues are, taking those same volume numbers, what are you currently bringing in. And then that column with the percent, you can see that that's the ratio. So it's showing that if we look at line one, business license, we only looked at a select few items under business license, but the current revenue is only recovering 30.3% of what it's costing you to provide that service. So that's how we would read that column. The difference is shown in column C, under your current subsidy. This is the difference between what it's costing you and what you're bringing in as revenue. So that would be what you are currently having to subsidize. And then column D is what the staff recommendations are as far as the cost would be concerned for those fees, and how that would translate into an increase in revenue for you. So again, if we look at that top line for business licenses, we're currently only bringing in about $86,000 in revenue. But with staff recommendations, that would increase to $152,000, making your recovery rate go up from 30.3% to 53.3%, or an increase of $65,654. So overall, you can see at the bottom there for totals, overall, it's roughly about $13 million in cost, annual cost between all of these departments to put on all of these fees. Your current revenue is about $7.3 million, which is about a 55.5% recovery rate. If you were to adopt staff recommendations, your recovery rate would go up to 63.9%, which would be an increase in your revenue of $1.1 million. Now, there are a couple of line items I want to point out here, special events. We didn't have volume numbers, but we are suggesting a couple of new fees there. So we couldn't make a revenue projection on those numbers. And city clerk, we had a very minimal amount of fees, minimal amount of information as far as volume, because they have items such as photocopies, for example. So we have a very small amount of money in that area there. Our next slide, we actually did building on a separate slide here. Go ahead and chew over it there. And with building, it's a little bit different. Right now, we are at a peak. We are at a boom in building across the nation, in particular in your city. City of Reno has a boom, where you're experiencing, you are actually overrecovering, meaning you're taking in more money annually than what it's actually costing you to provide the services or the cost of the building department. Now, in this case, we recognize because of the boom that we are in, this is really a volume and timing issue. It's not related to your fees are too high. It's you may be having some very large projects come in, and those projects are not paid for and completed in one fiscal year. They may span several fiscal years. So that revenue is really covering cost of labor over the period of time that that project is being worked on until its completion. So in that case, the department is recommending at this time no changes to their fee structure so that we can see how this is going to go. We're happy to take questions about that. Our next slide here, let me just... So what does all this mean? What are our next steps? You can keep the fees as they are now without any changes. You can take your current fees and just attach a CPI factor to increase them, or you can adopt staff recommendations, and that would result in the increase of $1.1 million. Few things to keep in mind when we're talking about fees. Level of recovery may not be the same in every department. Departments such as planning or community development as a whole is going to look very different than a recovery rate in your Parks and Recreation Department, where we're actively trying to encourage participation or actively trying to subsidize some of the cost to encourage enrollments or encourage certain programs. So not everything has to be 100% full-cost recovery. There also might be fees that are set by statute that cannot be changed and that we are capped at what you can charge. So those fees could not even be changed by a CPI factor. And then where do you stand with those peer comparisons? Obviously, they're not apples-to-apples, but you always want to know what your neighbors are doing or what like areas have on their fee schedule as well. And that's our presentation. We're happy to take any questions you might have.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Breckus?
So I had a vague notion that this was underway. I can't remember, did we issue the contract, the council? Ms. Van Buren? I think I recall it actually coming through budget last year.
It was done through the Finance Department.
Okay, through the Finance Department. And that's fine. I think it's a little more than routine, though, because it's comprehensive, and I appreciate the presentation. It's a lot to hit right now, and, you know, sometimes, Mr. Manager, it's good to, when you have a presentation, you've done a scope of work, it's good to get it on a council agenda separate from budget and maybe, you know, give us the study beforehand and let us know, and then tell us the budget implications. But her last slide, I thought, was helpful, giving us, you know, the options that we have today now in Budget Workshop. But, and I like the fact that they went and looked at ordinances, you know, to understand what our current lay of the land is in all these fees. And I like the fact that they looked at peers, but peers are very difficult to understand, particularly when you're maybe even just out of Washoe County, frankly. And then you're just looking at Sparks, because Sparks is, we only have one city in this county. So that's a tough one. So to me, that's when you really start to understand policy. And what I would have liked to have seen in this was a kickoff with a policy discussion. I think I could point to some things in the master plan that have some policy concepts that we could tickle, and she talked about one of those, which is access to Parks and Recreation fees. So the Building Enterprise Fund has some big policy implications that I've raised for years now. And, you know, she's kind of said growth, you just bank it until you don't have growth. I've seen that story not work out well. So I would really like to not see this roll into the budget, because you say that you've got the budget balanced, and tackle a policy position by the council on fees, whether they're global, but then some that are subset to different functions. And then I'll relieve, you know, my time, and I have some specific questions about, I think, her slides four and five. But, you know, you're kind of flying blind, in my view, if you don't really know as a body what your policies are on fees. And, you know, Nevada's so hampered in revenues for cities, and this is really only one of the one areas that we do have, but I think we need to understand what we're trying to achieve as we put fees out to different, you know, user groups. Thank you for the time.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Doerr.
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, I really appreciate the study. I think it's the first time I've seen something like this, really, since I've been here the eight years. We've looked at fees, but we haven't done a special consultant and taken that global look. So here's some things that I've seen over my many years of working with public agencies. And sometimes they under-collect, right? Because they have no understanding of what services are being, and I want to make sure I understand. So we're looking at the services such as HR, finance, and all of this that would get allocated to the departments. That's one aspect of this.
That is correct. Right? Because they use that to determine the cost for the total cost for the service.
Right, so I had a lot of experience with this at the county, and the county calls it their, I think it's called the cow camp. And is that right? And what they did there was, they had sort of this across-the-board that they figured out, but then for the smaller agencies that maybe only have, let's say, for comms, they only have X amount of people, or for HR, Y amount of people, it didn't quite translate. It was a big hit to small departments to be able to pay the full cow camp. And so I think that that should be a consideration, is maybe not, that there should be exceptions from time to time for different reasons, and that people should have the authority within the agency to make those decisions and make them quickly. I know, for example, I managed the Truckee River Flood Project, and we were technically a sub-agency of the county. We're only five people or 10 people. And we lived off-site. We had independent IT services. We had, we mostly managed our own HR. We really didn't take that full complement of county services, and so we argued that it should be less. And I think there even went through mediation on this, and it took like a year and a half or two years. It was after I was there, but where they were continually trying to figure out what this small unit should be assessed. And so I just do think, whatever we adopt, there should be a consideration for special cases. The other thing I want to just caution us about, so for many years, heading up other agencies, I dealt with places like the university and DRI, and I often wanted to hire them to do projects, but they had an incredibly high overhead assignment rate, which was 1.67% on top of the cost. In other words, like two-thirds, it would be, let's say, $10, and then there'd be another $20 almost, or at least 15 just for overhead. And it seemed incredibly high, and it made people that didn't have a lot of money not really be able to work with the agency. Now, they're in a different setting. It's a research organization. We are not. But I just want to caution us to not get too aggressive in terms of over-collection. And then finally, I'm a little concerned about that we didn't address special events, because it seems that we have a lot of special events and that most of our costs with those are in-kind services, and I really don't understand very well how they get collected. Maybe they're, get a direct collection of exactly how much it costs, and maybe it's not something we have to worry about. So I might have more, but especially about this access issue, but I'll hold it for right there. Thank you.
If I can chime in on the special events for a minute. That's a very tricky, that's a very tricky one.
Yeah.
Because the special events are geared around civic, a lot of civic activities. There's a tourism component to it as well. One of the things we looked at, though, were the cost, what the city charges for police coverage.
Right.
Related to special events. And that's an area we believe you want to take a look at that, because we thought that was being undercharged back to the events. Now, obviously, if it's a civic organization, you may not want to charge as much. These are all policy questions for the city council to debate.
Yeah.
But that was one area. The other area is always in public works and sanitation and garbage pickup, you know, after these special events. That's always a, you know, a large component, also some setup costs on barricades, you know, street closures and so on.
Yeah, and I'll just add, we did explore all of those, and it's my understanding you currently are charging by the hour or actual cost.
Right.
For those items. So if you have the appropriate hourly rate set, you should be recovering your cost alone. For those items. So if you have the appropriate hourly rate set, you should be recovering your cost alone.
Part of that was in our our fee comparison, the peer comparison.
Thank you very much. And I can give a little bit of insight. I know there's a couple of us that sit on the special events as well. And as with regards to the in-kind donations, there's a very sort of elaborative evaluation process that. An entire committee goes through for each special event. To allocate the percentage of the in-kind contribution. Based upon a huge criteria of things and and, you know. I can't even get into, I mean, the binders for these are incredibly thick. But as was stated yesterday, and I think there is opportunity for us to really start looking at some of the special events. Particularly some of the legacy long-term events that aren't more of the smaller civic. Locally sort of focused events about how we can start shifting. Appropriate amounts of the costs for these events. I think I think it's, we've done a good job over the years to continue to curl tail and move. Back on those. I think there's opportunity to expand on the RSCBA's involvement and I know Madam Mayor has been very active in. Having them to take a larger role in particularly these larger events that fill rooms. And start to level the field, I guess, for lack of a better term. So. I think we are aggressively looking at those. At the end of the day, you know, we're only recovering, you know, we're. We're only charging 50 to 60%. Of what our fees are based upon this evaluation. So I do think there's opportunities there. I did just want to say thank you for the. MGT consulting. I had to look down at the acronym, sorry. For the work that they did on this. I think the council has always been very interested and heard many presentations from staff. About the fees in the different departments, comparisons of what are being done. Regionally and elsewhere, so we aren't out pricing ourselves, so we remain competitive. But we also don't get left behind and end up, you know, really in the red on a lot of these things. There are instances, however, which I'm glad you brought up, MGT, about. There's just going to be some divisions that are never going to recover the full amount in which we subsidize. And that's the nature of government work. I think the seniors stuff is a is a good example of that. And there's no expectation and there shouldn't be that we're going to stay even with the fees we charge and the and the costs related to that service. So. I appreciate all the work that's done. I do think management and staff have done a really good job of digging in on these. And and I actually think the fees that staff has recommended are reasonable with the understanding special events. Needs a. Closer look at the structure and fees that we're charging there. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beckus.
Yeah, you know, and I I may still be unclear on this. Maybe I need to see the scope. But or the report. But are these only internal fee? Cost accounting or is it out into user groups or external?
This is a full cost recovery, so it's all the costs of the city that are charged to the customers.
Okay.
Internal and external.
Correct.
Okay.
They did two different, two different studies. This study was just the fee study and they actually did another study for our internal costs as well.
Internal costs, okay. So on this slide, then, it says business licenses, select fees only. Not sure what that means, but cost of user fee services. So it costs us $285,000 a year to administer the business licensing function. Is that what I'm to understand there?
Just just the fees that we had looked at, not the the overall business licenses. So there were only a select few fees that would lend themselves to an analysis. And so those are the ones that we looked at and the the cost, the labor involved with that is the 285,000. And the revenue associated with those select fees were was 86,000.
Yeah, because I know off the top of my head that we get way more than $86,000 in business fees.
Right.
So, you know. And I also know that, as you said, there's statutory issues with different fees and how they can be set and escalations and so on. And I think since I've been on, we have done an overall business fee study. But. You know, so. Right there, that raises a bunch of flags to me because I want to know which business fees we're talking about. If you're talking about rolling it into the budget, I want to know that detail right there. If we're going to overall internal cost accounting allocations. You know, for me, and I am not, you know, I'm okay on finance, but I'm not a finance, worked in finance, but for me, the only. I've seen situations where you get so much internal cost accounting, you know, the city manager's office is all split out among departments. You know, I I've lived that. I've seen that in this organization and it, people laughed about it, you know, because it just, it's just not a good accounting. It's general fund, it's general fund. So the only reason, in my view, to internal cost account. Is to ones that have their own dedicated fund or enterprise that you want to, you know. Sewer streets with the override and so on. So I I don't know, there's a lot here. And we go down and special events, you know, to a degree. You know, special events is a general fund commitment of the council through the for the 1%, you know, from the room tax, which is essentially general fund. So I don't know how elaborate you have to be. You just say this is what it is, you know, this is how much we're going to comp out and this is what it is. And then the the bigger issue to me in special events is that, you know. Police and fire, the public safety and traffic and everyone. Has an obligation of what they're supposed to do on the backend to make sure it's a safe event and it's a cleaned up event afterward. I don't really see too much cost accounting on that. So I have a lot of questions and not really comfortable to make budgetary decisions off of what I know. Unless someone can really dial down a certain fee going a certain way to me at at this point. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Doer.
Yeah, I know the question to us is what would we like to do about fees? So my first question to you is. You say we have a balanced budget. I don't know what assumption is built into that about the fees. Could you explain?
Of course. Thank you for the question. We, when we build the budget, we don't have, every single line is. We have a lot more lines than what you see here as far as even in the fee schedule. So we look at each individual line. So each individual revenue coming in and we make projections based on that. Unless we're going to see a large change in one particular fee, then we would build that in. In this case, when building the budget, we don't know councils.
You kept the fees the same.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to get to.
And we've kind of trended on forward and they go, they fluctuate too as well.
This is my thought. Thank you for answering. My thought is that we have a balanced budget. It's built on existing fees today. I think you have done an excellent job in sort of educating us and raising our awareness of the issues that we need to sort of tackle. And I do agree, we do need to make some policies. One of the policies that I'd like to see is a discussion of the use of our parks facilities. You know, we went through an exhaustive discussion about raising parks fees to to cover reading, meeting minimum wages. We are our parks employees were making like 10 bucks an hour and we wanted to get them to at least 15 and we started staggering in increases just in parks. Just to parks users. I understand, but really the parks are there for everyone and over time. Let's say it's a kid, over time they grow up and more kids come in, you know what I mean? Like there's a constant ebb and flow of your users based on age group. So I guess my inclination right now, I think we we talked yesterday about doing a little deeper dive on BFAC. The Enterprise Fund and what that can and can't pay for. And once we get a little bit more information about that. And maybe have a policy conversation about this, about should we have full recovery? Should we shoot for 50%? I'm not really comfortable, just to my colleagues, about increasing it right at this moment, at this time in this budget. So that's just where I stand. What I think we need to do a little bit more work to put a finer point to it. And that's just, I guess that's where I'm at right now.
I mean, maybe, if I could, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
Maybe if they have some time on the scope, you know, let's let's look at policies that are adopted around fees and user groups. Both internal and external.
Go ahead, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I guess my question is on this, when we look at the fee schedules and I understand that we want to look at things globally. But there appears to be a lot of questions on, you know, certain, certain departments or certain segments. Is there an opportunity to? To stay kind of where with our fees as we have previously, but then come forward with each departmental fees? On the go forward or does that mess up a process? In other words, it sounds like everybody's kind of wanting to dig in a little bit more, particularly on special events and maybe some of the other fees.
And parks.
And parks. So do we want to, I mean. Is it bad process to take them department by department without taking them all at once?
Thank you for the question. Typically, what we've done in the past is we've adjusted the fees that are adjustable by CPI by CPI. And that's what council has approved typically. We have not done a full study like this since 2016. So this gives us a good idea as we've been adjusting those fees over time, where we were and where. Where the fees are as far as how much they cost us to do, just adjusting by CPA. A lot of them come in line. Right around that same dollar amount. And then there are some that are outside of that range. And so the the idea behind the study is that council can get an idea of where we are and what path you want to do going forward. What we're recommending as far as finance is going with the CPI adjustment like we have in the past, unless there are certain fees that are different. That are, that look like we're not charging enough and to have a discussion on that.
So I guess my question on that is if we moved forward today and said, continue as we always have done. But we would like to bring back the special events, the parks and.
The BFAC.
The BFAC. Individually for further discussion and possible consideration. Does that mess with your process?
No, it won't mess with it. The fees don't get adopted until we adopt the budget. So this is just for discussions so that we can understand.
But we can adjust as we go along.
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's what I wanted. Thank you.
And we have today some of the fees that normally come up. We do have Development Services here to discuss the fees for buildings, so we may not need that extra media. And we also have parks because those are the fees that typically are the ones we have more cost recovery on or we have more questions on from the building community. And so we do have a discussion on that. So then our our recommendation aside from that is just the CPI adjustment. Or if there is a particular fee that's out of alignment, maybe looking at that. But outside of that, it's kind of what we've always done.
Under our rules, to our consultants, we each only get three minutes for Q and A on any item and then one minute follow-up. So I'm I'm on my one minute follow-up at this point. You know, we're going to see CPI, I think, unprecedented in what we've probably seen in our lifetimes. You know, like even before. And so I'm going to want to take careful note to some of those CPIs, particularly how they hit people who may already be be struggling. The one CPI that I've had the most issue with. Is the sewer rates that jump every October and are on CPI at the same time while the connection fees that hit the. Development community, you know, who you're going to go out and talk to and the, or, you know, who we hear a lot from. And the growth have stayed frozen since 2014. So that's my, in my sights, is the biggest inequity we have. But that's separate from the budget, right? Because that's a an ordinance that lives somewhere else, correct? Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Doer.
Yeah, and as far as CPI, I mean, you kept, you keep referencing special ones or something special, if we have something special. But do you have something that you want to bring to our attention that is special?
I know that Public Works has some fees that they do believe could be increased because they're looking at them based on what was recommended from the study. So they do have a few of those fees.
When are we going to hear about that?
Well, we wanted to kind of get direction. Do you want us to go to more? Do you want to stay the course? Or do you want to look at adjusting some of the fees and we can certainly. Bring that back at another time.
I'm not totally comfortable staying the course and here's why. I think it was already mentioned that the CPI is very likely very high. And I don't know that I'm ready to see, let's say, a 7% increase in our fees because of CPI. I I don't think that's reasonable. I think our fees should be adjusted, you know, more slowly, either up or down. You know, in a more moderate way. So I would not be, and I would like to see our fees stay the same. Until you come forward with some proposals, whether it's from Public Works, Parks or whoever, to specifically change some fees. I just think we're in a very challenging, difficult year and especially when it comes to parks. I don't want, I would not want it, let's say, I don't play tennis, but let's say the tennis courts cost X. Or or swimming at wherever costs Y. And this is a big, finally, we're out of COVID, people want to get out, they want to do these activities. And suddenly it costs seven or eight percent more, like a tomato. I I don't think, I think if we have the ability to moderate that, that we should. So, you know, I would be, when when we say stay the course, I'd like to see them stay the same. Maybe that sounds inconsistent. I'm always for cost recovery. But I think we're in a kind of a unique position of one, having egregious increases in costs. But two, have the benefit of a really good study, but three, still have some questions. So I'm not, and we have a balanced budget. And I think you said the balanced budget does not even include a CPI on fees. Is that correct?
Yes.
It's just as fees as they are today. So that's kind of where I am, colleagues.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I. I feel like from just hearing some of the conversations and some of the feedback and all of the variables, because it has been a super unusual period of time. I think it's imperative that we have our full body here to make any ultimate decisions on this because that is significant. So I guess my question is to our city manager, what's our timeline on this again? Not taking no action today, what does that do? If we were to bring it back and start chunking it up into departments and and having a deeper dive?
It's certainly a conversation that we can have over the course of the budget year. And I think what Director Van Buren has has indicated, and please jump in when I get it wrong. Is that we can move forward with the fees as they are today. And you can still pass a balanced budget. You know, the long range impacts of that, though. Are as the CPI changes, you'll be able to do less and less. And so. Being able to pass a balanced budget next year and provide the same services without contemporaneously making adjustments to the fees. Would will be a challenge.
So might I make a, I don't know if we need a motion, just a suggestion, is today, we just keep things status quo. But with a direction to staff at the. Timing and importance priority of departments, bring them back. One or two at a time for us to do a deeper dive on and contemplate for the longer term future adjustments. Because I get it. I mean, we can't keep, you know, we can't stay in 1988 and expect 2023 services or facilities. So I get what we're saying here. So that would be my preference is to just kind of. Pump the brakes today, keep things status quo and then but bring them back departmentally. I I'm willing to make a motion, but I hear from the rest of the body. I mean, I just kind of.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Thornley. We adopt this at the, it needs to be done by the end of the month, correct?
Yes, well, the budget, right? And this is part of that.
Right.
This is scheduled for May 18, along with the budget.
It's like two weeks.
Yeah.
And this is just for direction. We're providing all the information.
Yeah.
And we'll go with your direction.
If we all know this, this is all information and then we kind of, I mean, we've done this every year where we kind of look at it and revise it.
Right.
And we sort of always hit this point, seems like, right?
Right.
Where we're like, wait, hold up, hold up. Right? So, okay, good. Thank you so much. Councilwoman Doer.
Well, I think Councilwoman Beckus was first.
You're up.
Sure. You know, I just, rather than that motion on the table, I think this is just for your information and let's look at that fee schedule. And I'll give you an example is Public Works. I don't know what they've got going, but probably a a street cut. To cut into your sewer line or a sewer line if someone's remodeling a house. It's probably X and they want to put a CPI on that. You know, that's probably going to be okay versus the park fee, a park fee. So I would just like to see. Because when you guys send us the fee schedule, and I don't know if it's in what you gave us on our table on, is it?
Yes.
It's like 30 pages of fees. So I think we just take this information and look at that 30-page printout. And if anything jumps up, we look at it. I mean, I I interpret now that this is really. Your effort to help us make that decision when we get that 30-page spreadsheet.
Yes, correct.
Okay, Councilwoman Doer.
Yep, just my last thought on this is that we could set, I mean, to to the manager's point, we could set a date of, let's say. To phase in fees in January 1. to phase in fees in January 1. Like, we could spend a few months looking at the departmental fees, you know, it is a lot to comprehend. I'm I'm not at all about, like what you just said, using a 1980 fee for 2025 service, not at all. I just, I am very concerned about a giant jump in certain of these fees. And I don't want to disadvantage those that can least afford them. And we've been through this with the seniors, with the parks, with, you know, just to use a quarter or a dollar increase on a, on a, you know, a racket type game. That that's torturous for us, frankly. But we do understand, I'm being honest. We we do understand that that we have to reflect current costs. Costs of everything are going up. So I have no problem with continuing to take a look at it and maybe setting a new timeframe, maybe a mid-year adjustment on the fees as we figure out, maybe inflation will be 7% again the next year. Or maybe it will slow down, you know, go into some kind of recession. We don't know. But I would, I think it would be a little bit, what do you would like to say, Mr. Manager?
So I might, before it ends up on Twitter, wrong. Parks in particular is not proposing a 7% increase in their fees.
Thank you.
Proposing that they stick with the five-year plan that the council has already blessed.
For the increases to cover the cost of staff?
Yes. And so the the result, the resulting shortfall, if we don't follow that plan, is about $870,000.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with that. We we did bless that. I just, but it was unclear to me with this presentation if if we're adding something to that plan, for example, additional cost recovery. Or it was unclear to me right now.
For parks in particular, which I understand to be the specific pain point.
Yeah.
They are proposing exactly the five-year plan, and I'm sure Director Schroeder can come up and speak
Please.
to those fees.
Yes. Well, she's scheduled to come up.
You're, could she just answer this question? Yeah. Wait. Okay.
Development Services was coming up and then Parks, because those were the the ones that always are very tricky.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I was going to ask if Mr. Flansburgh can talk about the the changes or what kind of things that they would like to comment on or or be working on.
They're scheduled next in the deck.
Okay.
Let's finish with the consultant.
All right, Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, just one last thing is, you know, the way I understand it, the federal relief money is to mitigate impacts to COVID. And is this inflationary times that we have related to the COVID pandemic, you know, supply chains and, you know, so pothole patches for, you know, sewer cuts is more, so we have to jump those up. So if it is, is there a way to use some of that second half of money that's coming to us to backfill our budget when we make a decision to not pass on fee hikes to our public? That is something I would be asking you to do analysis on to help us and maybe even buy next, you know, the 18th.
Okay. Moving on.
Do we have any more questions for the consultants?
I think we're good. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time. Very helpful.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good day. And please reach out if you have questions.
So this is just a summary to to say that typically we do CPI on those fees that we can do CPI on, does not mean that we have to. As Manager Thornley mentioned, Parks and special events, and some of those are are just outside of this. And the department has made recommendations based on that, and that is in the fee schedule itself. And staff, you know, has made their recommendations as far as whether they want to keep fees flat, which maybe is Parks, or whether they want to increase them by CPI, and that is in the fee schedule itself. The CPI for the current year is 7.1, as was mentioned earlier. The for building, they do a valuation table update, which is a little different. Parks and Rec, theirs are obviously a little different because those fees are subsidized. And then Muni Court and Police, a lot of their fees are are set by other things such as NRS or FBI reimbursements, or they have other things that dictate what their fees are. So those don't change as well based on this, they're based on some other statute or law. So right now, I would like to go into Development Services and have Development Services Director come up.
Good afternoon, everyone. Chris Pingree, Director of Development Services. And I know there's a lot of questions on currently what we have going on in Development Services as far as our budget and the structure of our fees that we're, we are asking for for next year. Going through the the slide, we've kept this pretty simple. With the fee study that did come out that MGT, MGT performed, we the planning and engineering fees were all over the board. We have, in the interim, ran our own numbers on the length of time and and resources it takes for the individual applications and processes we do in the within planning and engineering. But we are suggesting the update by CPI for our planning and engineering fees, which have not been raised in quite some time since the last CPI a couple of years back. And that is our only real general fund-related item. But as far as the Building Enterprise Fund, we are asking to maintain existing fee levels across the board and keep things status quo the way we have them now, as well as the building supplemental, which is the individual permits, the standalone permits in the building department, and fire fees that are associated with the new construction. And we are asking there to maintain the existing fee levels as well. The only change that we would be bringing forward to this next fiscal year's budget is the building valuation table, which assesses new construction costs nationally by the International Code Council that we, back in 2018, we took in front of this body in order to create a fair and equitable way to evaluate each individual construction project on a equitable sliding scheduled based on their occupancy and their building construction type. So as we have done in years past, we take the February of '22 valuation table that is is published by the International Code Council, and we adopt that into the following year's budget as of July 1. And there are some minimal changes in that budget, but all that that only affects the new construction, residential and commercial construction, building permits and only. That's pretty much, that's all we're asking for on as far as this this budget. So any, I know there's going to be questions, so I'm here, I'm here to answer, answer whatever, whatever you guys have.
Okay. Great job, Chris. Thank you so much. Any questions, Councilwoman Breckus? No, nothing? Okay. Councilwoman Doer? All right. There you go.
Can I stand here for a few more minutes? Thank you, everybody.
Thanks so much. Great job.
I'm a little shorter than Mr. Pingree. All right. Good morning. For the record, Jamie Schroeder, Director of Parks and Recreation. And so what I wanted to do, because we've had quite a few years pass when we started talking about the minimum wage increases, just give this body a quick reminder of what we have done in the past. So this council went ahead and you can't adopt a five-year, you know, budget process. And so we created that five-year graduated cost recovery plan. And as Mr. Thornley said, it was basically blessed by the council the past couple of fiscal years, as well as the Rec and Park Commission and the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. And it was created in order to slowly incrementally raise our fees and attempt to keep pace with the minimum wage increases each year. So fiscal year '21 and '22, council went ahead and adopted those fee increases. And where it got a little bit interesting was for last year, the fiscal year '22, this council was kind enough to adopt an accelerated minimum wage increase. So we jumped to 11 rather than what the state law required, which was 975. But we did not accelerate the fees to match that. We wanted to, again, be mindful of our community and still sort of slow that portion down. And then when we did a little bit of restructuring of our department, we created the Health and Wellness Division, which then allowed us to create the Health and Wellness Pass for all of our scholarship recipients. And so what that does is for our members of the community that are on a very fixed or limited income, it, if you are qualified for our scholarship, then you automatically get this Health and Wellness Pass, which gives everyone in your household access to our most basic recreational services. The remote is not working. If you could advance this slide for me, please. Thank you. So this is the Assembly Bill 456 is what mandated the minimum wage increase. And again, our council was very generous with jumping that. So where we should have been effective the last budget cycle and where we should be effective this budget cycle, we are already past that. And so the motion that was made last year was to accelerate to 11 with the intent of this body making the decision this year, jumping it to 12. So that would be a decision that we would need to make probably by May 18, if this council would like to do the accelerated and jump it all the way to 12 or not. So our fee schedule is rather lanky, lengthy. It's approximately 500 lines. So it's, you have the full document in your packet, but we wanted to give you sort of a cross-section or examples of what is listed in that fee schedule. So you have an idea of the types of increases that we're recommending in that five-year plan. And we've got sort of your past history, so you can see the differences. And so pooling rentals by our swim teams, we just slowly did the increment by 25 cents each year, so they could adjust, knowing that their costs would adjust by 25 cents. When we have to be mindful of other services that are provided throughout the area, you'll see our adult softball league. We have not recommended an increase for this year. We're holding it. And then we plan to increase it next year, keeping in mind that City of Sparks also offers those adult leagues. And so we want to stay competitive with that. Our team has done an amazing job trying to simplify our fee schedule. Prior to discussions with this on what all of our fees were, you would pay different amounts to use different facilities because it made sense on paper with cost recovery. Did it make sense for our community? No. So what we wanted to do was also capitalize on this five-year cost recovery plan to simplify our fees. We often have customers that would like to use a pool and a rec center. So we're taking this time over the next five years to actually make the fees match up. It's beneficial for our community, beneficial for our staff. And you'll notice that we end with no quarters, because that is always a challenge of finding enough quarters during our daily operations. And then the last example is our before and after school program. We still remain one of the lowest cost providers in the community, and we want to be mindful of that. And so, again, we're not looking to jump the fee by a significant amount in order to make sure that our families can still afford the program. As I had mentioned earlier, we're talking about trying to simplify our fee schedule. So this is an example on the left of how it's currently lined out. We do it by individual program. That's what contributes to the very lengthy fee schedule. And so what we want to do is simplify that by doing categories. So on the right, what we're proposing is we change it to any of our programs or contract classes that fall within a city facility will fall within that $5 to $100 range. Then if it's off-site, where typically the costs are a lot more expensive because we're using private facilities, that would be at a higher range. And then where we ensure that we have transparency is our brochure that we advertise to the public. Then when we actually have the specific class, we will still be able to be transparent with how much that class is going to be. Some new fees that we're recommending. Traditionally, we do not allow commercial businesses to do business in our parks without a license. We've never really had something to address professional photography, which happens on a pretty regular basis. So we're recommending that we just duplicate Washoe County's fee schedule, what they charge for their parks for professional photography. Our athletics, adult athletics team has heard the demand for dodgeball, so we're going to introduce a new dodgeball league. Our risk management team, if they're watching, we're using less risky dodgeballs. You will remember that you approved the use of CARES Act funding to construct a disc golf course at Mayor's Macklinden Park. Now that that 18-hole course is completed, which I hear from the community, it's one of the best courses in the county. We wanted to make sure we put a rental fee in there in case anyone wanted to hold a tournament. And then last but not least, Paradise Park Activity Center. We're working on, you know, the community dynamics are changing, and we're seeing a lot of multi-generational families. And so we have seen an increase in seniors who want to bring their grandchildren to the facility. So we wanted to add a 10 punch pass for all the age groups, so that we're addressing that. So the fee schedule was presented to the Rec and Park Commission back in March. They stuck with the same recommendation as the previous two years. And so with that, in addition to what the user fee study came up with, we're still recommending that we stay the course on the five-year plan.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
All right. Good job. Bye, Smearle. Go ahead. Thank you very much. I guess my question is, if if the recommendations are to stay the course and the council already adopted the five-year plan, do you come before us just simply to say, have we changed our minds?
Well, you can only, so the fee schedule has to be adopted every year. And so we're, it's in a way procedural to ensure that we're following the proper, you know, method of, you couldn't, you know, adopt this fee schedule for two fiscal years out. But that's why we called it a plan, so that you, we, you already knew ahead of time of what we were, our strategy was. And then now this is like more just parliamentary procedure of you're saying, yes, you haven't changed.
What we already anointed and voted on, and you're just here before us saying, yep, status, everything's kind of the same. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, Councilwoman Doer.
I, I don't know if you, you probably didn't put this on here purposely, but can you remind us of what the percent increase is for this year?
So we didn't necessarily do like an average percentage because we did not raise every line. Some fees just stayed because there was really no need to change them, like the wood cutting permit. I think that is still $10 or something very minimal like that. But more than anything, I said, if you, if you were to say that we needed to put a percentage to it, I'd want to come back to you, maybe even tomorrow, and just say, we could do the quick average and tell you what that is.
Okay.
But it's definitely not, we didn't just look at every fee and say, apply the CPI.
I had a quick question about the photography fee. So lots of people take pictures in our parks, right? I mean, that's one of the things. We're planting flowers, we have trees, we have kids playing. I mean, you want to take, so professional photographer. So how do we determine that? They have a license to be a professional photographer?
Yeah, it it really ends up being an honor system, but we have had, you know, professional photographers that have a business license that have come to us saying, I would like to, you know, do all the senior portraits in your park.
Right. So I'm aware of some of these professional photographer fees in other states. And and they can get really pricey. Like, you do a wedding or something, and the fee itself is like $1,000 or so. I mean, it's very high. So I'm glad to see these, these fees are at least reasonable. And like you said, it's on the honor system. I don't know, what do they do, arrange it ahead of time and say, hey, I'm going to do a shoot? Now, are they allowed as part of that to block off a section of the park to do their?
I think we would work with them, you know, because we don't want anybody putting stakes in the ground based on infrastructure that we've got underneath there. But it would allow them to be able to say, you know, I I have this permit, I need to do this photo shoot. Can you please just vacate the area while we do it?
I'll give you an example. This fall, I was at Ranches Hammerfell. And I was walking around and it was actually the the arboretum part of Ranches Hammerfell, above. And there was a professional photo shoot. It might have been a video. It was clearly some kind of model shoot with different clothes. And they had sort of taken over an area about as big as this, I guess, room. And, you know, we stayed out of their way, but I got a sense, I think they had cones or something to sort of say, not not with stakes, but sort of, this is my area for right now to do my shoot. And so just some things to think about, like when you say you're modeling it on, that's Washoe County Park. I ran into the situation. But anyway, I do support where we're going. I don't know, though, on the fees, where we were adding, increasing fees, I think it's the whole thing, to ensure that our staff get paid appropriately. First of all, I interrupted you to say, yes, I do think we should go to the higher fee, uh, pay rate, wage. Definitely, like 100%. And in fact, And in fact, I think we should reevaluate it, because $12 is still not what they're paying, you know, at fast food restaurants. And so I think we're really struggling, and you may struggle to get people to staff your parks. I don't know. Do you have a comment or thought on it?
Well, so because we were able to jump to $11 last year, I will say that it greatly helped us compete with our colleagues. Washoe County and City of Sparks were in the same boat as us for a while with recruitment. It's a constant thing in the world of parks and recreation. But we were actually able to open our pools on time and keep them open with limited cuts to programs, because we were able to recruit staff, because we were able to pay higher. Yes. So it was incredibly beneficial to us to be able to recruit, and then in turn, it's beneficial to the community, because we can provide these programs.
And this is an age group that's, who are these people usually, from like 15 to 22 or something?
So a majority of our staff are high school, college students. But we also do have retirees, and then we have, you know, 30 to 40 age group that it's a second job.
Okay. Well, I'm supportive of getting it up as high as we can get it, because maybe there are retirees, but a lot of these people, this is their job.
Correct.
For the summer.
Yep.
Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see it go to 12 also. And if we can use CARES money to buy that down, that'd be good. I'm in the pool once a week, our pool's, you know, usually twice a week. And, but you know, when you say allowed you to keep them open, I remember last July, June, there were weeks where you'd walk up and they said, you know, pool capacity is only 78, pool capacity is only 100. And if you're the 101st person, you have to sit there for 10 minutes before someone leaves. And I just, I just don't want to see that again, particularly if we have a hot summer. So I'd like to see us give you what you need to keep those pools, you know, in that summer period, because it seemed that was very acute for you. And then I don't know about the professional fees for the, you know, the family Christmas holiday card or the graduation card. Could we maybe put the fee in place if it's, you know, in the zoning code, you say, single family is a family, you know, and then there's a definition inside of a family. So, you know, something beyond a family or household use, you know, for purposes other than family or household use. And then everyone gets to define a family however they wanted to find a family, right? You know, a couple about to be wed, that's a family. Grandparents, that's a family. I don't know. I just, to me, if it's the realtor going down and doing, or the, you know, the massage therapist going down and taking her shots, his shots for the website, I'm okay. But if it's the family for personal business, I'm having a hard time with that one. And then the last one is specific to the Reno Tennis Center on Plumas. Remind me, I thought we had two courts that were free and able for any walk-on at any time to use.
So the Reno Tennis Center is the one facility in the city of Reno that is under a concessionaire agreement. All the other courts in the community are free and open to use for the public. The Reno Tennis Center would not have the improvements, and being the state that it is right now without the concessionaire, because they're responsible for fundraising in order to get those courts reconstructed. So those do have fees associated with them.
Yeah. You know, I think that has five-year renewals that are allowed by staff. And, you know, I'm around when that comes. I think I'm going to renew it only on one court being set aside for the public. Because if you're, I mean, if you look at that geographic-wise, geographically, you're at, where are the other courts for that? You're at either downtown at Barbara Pennant, or you're, is there courts at Manzanita?
Mm-hmm. Courts at Manzanita, and then Washoe County has some courts on the other side of their golf course.
Yeah.
So there are courts. We have 40 total throughout.
Yeah. I don't know. Just conceptually, I have a hard time having it fully under concessionaire.
Yep, noted. And then just a reminder too, last summer was complicated with COVID and capacity restrictions. So that was a challenge with our pool operations.
On your pool. But I thought it was more lifeguard availability for those numbers. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I am wondering at this time, and I'm open to this body for discussion. We are down to four members now. And I'm curious if we can, or if we maybe should bump the remainder of today to tomorrow in anticipation of at least, I think, two members will be back, my understanding? I just, I'm open to discussing. I just know we can't, it'd be, well, yes. Oh, and Councilwoman Weber's not going to be here. Okay. Well, I guess, Mr. Manager, tell me what we will need affirmative action on the rest of today, or is it informational, and then tomorrow, you tell me.
All three days are informational. We don't need, we're just looking for feedback.
Could have a subquorum and just take in the information? I mean, we're still broadcasting.
Well, it's, agenda is a public meeting, so I don't know.
Yes, we can't break. That's the thing. I didn't want to break.
It is, it is, these three days are an opportunity to see where we're at in the budget process, and give us sort of some final feedback before we bring back a finished, or hopefully finished product on the 18th. If what you're looking for is more folks on the dais to take in the information, I think it just makes for a slightly longer day tomorrow, if you want to bump the CIP work till tomorrow.
And Vice Mayor. You all tell me what you would like.
I think that we should continue to move on, because it's recorded, and our council members can refer back to that and get the information as well.
Then we shall move forward.
As well as the public.
Yeah. Let's just, if lunch comes in, you know.
We'll just pop out individually.
Yeah, well, we can't.
Oh, shoot, we can't.
So, okay. So let's take the next segment, and then reconvene as one mind, and then go.
Yeah. All right. Madam Clerk. Are we on to the next presentation?
Vicki Van Buren, for the record, interim finance director. We are on to the next segment, which is the capital improvement plan. Before you see our general capital project funds, we have the general capital project fund, which is typically funded by transfers from the general fund, grants, or other proceeds. We have the room surcharge capital project fund, which is the $2 surcharge fund. That's the $2 on the rooms in the downtown area. We have the event center fund, that is the ballroom. That's the one that is managed by the management group at the Row. And you get that report usually in February and March of each year. We have the park capital project fund, and that's the park districts' capital project fund. And then the capital tax fund, which is the special ad valorem tax that we have. So going into those individually, we have, again, the general capital project fund. That one, we have a $4 million transfer proposed from the general fund over to that. That's used for to rehabilitate city-owned buildings and facilities and other projects. We have CDBG, that funding. We have the room surcharge, again, that's that $2 surcharge. And then the special ad valorem, which is, that money's used to purchase equipment and capital assets or to renovate existing facilities, but you cannot use that funding for maintenance. We have the room tax fund, where we typically fund some capital out of there. This year, we have in there the $115,000 for the downtown lighting, and then also the funding for the Art Belongs Here program. For the park districts, that funding, it comes from residential construction tax, and there's one project slotted for this year. That funding is accumulated over time and then allocated as those projects come forward. The sewer funds comes from the sewer use and connection fees, and it's restricted to the capital projects for sewer. And then for the street fund, that comes from property tax and motor vehicle fuel tax, and has to be used on streets, alleys, and public highways of the city. Within the general capital, the $4 million being allocated from the general fund, these are the projects that are being proposed. The largest proposal that you'll see on this list is the $2.5 million for the city hall's second-floor remodel. This project is in alignment with council's direction that they want to better serve the community and align services for the public in one location. And so that is the intent of this project. The other projects you see on here are parks ADA upgrades, some playground equipment, some pathway resurfacing, and then a roof replacement at the police facilities. And then the last line you'll see is server and network replacement program as the servers get outdated, and we need to keep IT current. When we go on to the capital tax fund, we have public radio, public safety radio equipment budgeted at $600,000, and public safety evidence storage at $100,000. This is typical how we've spent this money in the past, due to the radios needing to be replaced on a continuous basis to keep those current. In the room tax fund, again, that was the art in public places and the downtown street lighting. And then in the park district funds, we have Carmelo Ranch Estates PUD parks for that $300,000. And that's the only project that is planned for next year. There are projects that are continuing over, and probably will overlap years that are still ongoing. For the general, in the general capital projects fund too, I broke these out separately just so that you could see them. We have the bond proceeds that are anticipated for the Public Safety Center and for the Moana Pool, and then the Reno Fire Headquarters. This would be the breakdown of the bond and how it's applied. And for informational purposes, for the Public Safety Center, we have cash funding available for that project of $30 million. We have the Pennington Grant for the $5 million. So we have approximately half of that project in cash and grant proceeds. For Moana Pool, we have $10 million in cash funding. And we have the $9 million that's been committed in the Pennington Grant. So we have $19 million of that. And then the remainder would be the 27 here for that project. And then for the Reno Headquarters, we're just planning the $2 million from the bond to do that, planning for that. The next portion here is going to be going into Public Works. And so I want to bring up Mr. Flansburgh to go into the street fund.
Good morning. For the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works. I'm going to run through the street fund, and we'll also run through sewer fund. And I'll share that presentation with our utility services director, Trina Magoon. So just highlights here. You are very aware of the street units, because we choose those out in advance. So we'll just kind of cover what we're going to be doing with those streets. Obviously, we're trying to keep our good pavements good, and our preventive maintenance program in that case is really important. We also do the deep dive on the rehabs. Traffic engineering and safety, these are projects that you are aware of, some of them, but not all of them. So I wanted to share which ones the staff would recommend that we move forward with, including a communications upgrade to our existing school flasher program. And then finally, as we are growing and in need of additional maintenance and operations space, we are looking to locate a satellite facility in the North Valleys. As you can imagine, just, Councilmember Weber, you can imagine and appreciate this, just for our vehicles to travel from our corp yard here in central part of town and go up to North Valleys to do service and come back can be inefficient. And so having a location up there for some of those operations would improve our efficiency. And so we're looking towards that as we continue to grow. And you'll see that covered both in streets and in sewer fund. So just again, big picture on the street fund. We're looking at little over $22 million in capital improvement projects. The Neighborhood Street Program is obviously the largest. We're looking at not quite $2.5 million in traffic engineering and safety, the $1 million for the facility, and then $270,000 for bridge preservation. We'll talk about that project as well. Just some fun facts, 742 total paved miles. We have a current pavement condition index of 78. We have 313 traffic signals and 96 bridges. Now, when most people think of bridges, we look at Virginia Street Bridge, we look at some of the big ones. But they also include some of the larger culverts. And we'll talk about that in the bridge repair item that we're going to discuss. The growth in miles is shown with a baseline of 400 going up to the 742 today over the last 20 years. But I also want to highlight the amount of CIP, capital improvement projects within the street fund. You'll recall that during the Great Recession, we did a 10-year bond, and we did about, in over four years, we did 10 million, or 10 years' worth of work, we'll call it that, in terms of the item, not knowing how long the recession was going to take. We paid that bond proceed off in fiscal year 19. And so the good news here is that that has allowed us to increase the amount of capital projects that we've been able to do. But it also has increased the amount of time it takes and staff. And I just want to make a shout out to our capital projects team for the good work that they do managing this larger load of projects. That's allowed us to go from two projects a year to three and even four in certain years. And so it's been very important for us on the rehabilitation side of things. Neighborhood Street Project, Talis, Van Ness, Ackard, and Watt Street. Dickerson shows up there as well. I just want to manage expectations. Dickerson received $87,000 in CDBG funds. We're looking at making pedestrian improvements. Councilmember Breckus, you've been instrumental in that project. So this will be for doing some of the design and public outreach this year for Dickerson, and then in anticipation for a future project. Again, our preventive maintenance project, which is very important. All of you saw indoor sidewalks, pedestrian improvements, one of the transportation alternative programs, projects that you approved on urban and plumas for pedestrian improvements. So that's a big part of what we are looking to do this next year. And just as a reminder, we were just talking about the tennis center. But here at the Washoe Golf Course, where urban and plumas come along, making those sidewalk improvements. So excited to have that coming on this year as well. In traffic engineering and safety, we see a good opportunity. Nevada Department of Transportation performed what we call, love the terminology, a retro reflective backplate retrofit. I'll show you what that means in a moment. But basically, it is improving at the actual visual heads of the traffic signals. And we believe that through the safety program there, we can get a 90 to 95% grant. So we have a 5 or 10% match. And so we will be pursuing that project, and we'd recommend that to the council. In addition, our downtown signal replacements, when the downtown improvements were made as part of redevelopment, you can remember the back to the black cherry of color that we had everywhere. And most of those traffic signals are black today. But those boxy-looking signals that we have in the downtown, what we have found as they have aged is that we're starting to see corrosion in the base. And that gives us concerns for their just long-term stability. And so we're looking to make some replacements on those and start that program. The signal and lighting projects is simply the ones that, the lights and traffic signals that are hit that we need to then go and do replacements. So that's really just replacement, and then our traffic calming projects. And then finally, our school flasher system, communication upgrades. You've seen all the flashers in the school zones and where they are. You can just imagine the amount of work it takes to program those on an annual basis as schools change their minds about what time they're going to start, shift things one way or the other. So just improving our communication so we can have a better system to send those out in terms of the programming. Of course, we also work with the school districts closely on their special events, and they have some opportunities also to go in and make some of those changes for maybe a special school night, something to that effect. Here is the traffic signal retro reflective backplates. What's really important about this is at night, of course, if they show up and you can see where they are and you know where to look. But also during the daytime, having a good contrast. So the project really involves taking the backplates down, repainting them so they're black, and then putting the QD tape on them so that they are highly reflective. And again, we believe this to be a very strong project for Nevada DOT to fund through some of their state funds, to replace those out with a Sternberg-type traffic signal head, so it kind of matches the lighting that we have down here. So we're not looking to go to the just strict galvanized type of poles with the Cobra Head Lumineers. We would go to, we would use the Sternberg design. You'll see that design up at Center Street near the freeway. There's the signal that's under that design. And then again, finally, our traffic calming program through the neighborhoods. This, of course, is not on our public emergency vehicle routes, Chief Cochran. But these are in our neighborhoods, and a program that helps us not only for the traffic calming this way, but also the flashing rectangular beacons and the speed radar feedback signs, which have been affected in other locations that we can use on some of those primary emergency vehicle routes. Again, the maintenance and operations facility in North Valley is going out and locating a spot and doing the planning to locate and build a new facility for us, a satellite. And then finally, Evans Creek Drive Culvert Arts Segment Repair. We have one of these, these are brought in, these segments that there's a foundation built and they're set down. We have noticed some cracking going on in one of these. We have noticed some cracking going on in one of these that we need to address. And so we want to go in and replace the art segment in, in our bridge, as part of our bridge program. And with that, that answers all of the street CIP. Do we want to take a stop here just to answer questions?
Yes, let's definitely do that. Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, so I'll start with you, Mr. Flansburgh, since you're up. And then I have some questions for Ms. Van Buren. So, traffic update. We've had 16 major accidents and eight fatalities so far. Last year, total calendar year, 22 major accidents and 12 fatalities. So we're not doing well. We're not doing well. People are getting killed and people are getting hurt. And the major accidents, they're almost always life-changing injuries to body. And I have a hard time with the street budget because so much of it, I think, needs to be changes from RTC and how we approach traffic regionally. But I think in lieu of that reform, which is needed and will come someday, we need to do things differently here. And, you know, last time I went to the CDVG, I heard 85,000 was not going to Dickerson. I don't care. Dickerson, which has had a lot of subdivision activity, needs a $2 million retrofit, but it's not alone. We need a lot of, lot of, lot of places need retrofits. And I'm seeing some of that sign when you go out into the neighborhood program. We need it so much more. So I don't know this million-dollar operations facility, it sounds like it's probably needed, but we need to start building more for safety. And I'm not seeing it. And we need to, to accelerate that very quickly and work on retrofits. So I know safety is the, you know, the plates and I saw NDOT doing that. I'm going to be looking real soon and, and maybe your budget's set and the augmentation, but I'm going to be looking for a multimodal safety planner to be somewhere housed. You know, maybe it's over in community development, development services, advancing policy, but, or maybe it's in your house, but we need someone empowered to work on all of these transportation issues from a safety and planning perspective, not more operations. So it's time to get that position into the budget, in my view. I'm really concerned, and we all should be, about what's going out on our streets. And we know it's engineering, we know it's enforcement, we know it's education, but it's really broken right now. And, you know, what is our number of confidence on? I mean, we do not want anyone killed on our streets and they are getting killed with increasing frequency. And, you know, I think everyone should be alarmed and I'm very alarmed. Thank you.
I'd just like to come over to answer in that area. Nevada Department of Transportation is looking at a local public agency process program. What that would do is would actually, we've had Nevada Department of Transportation come in with a few safety projects. Second Street comes to mind as something that was in the last few years. This actually will allow us to have a, an opportunity to take these projects directly and do the project management through those and to bring these forward for prioritization, which I think is going to give us a greater opportunity to receive funding, to do projects that we see and understand the needs for. And so I just want to bring that that's an opportunity that's going to be coming forward. I know it's going to their transportation board for, for adoption and ideally it will be adopted and we'll have that opportunity.
Councilwoman Mador.
Yeah. Could you just, I'm not sure I fully grasp it, it sounds really interesting. So could you just say it again, like maybe in different words? So are they going to delegate to us and bring money to do projects locally? Is that, that sounds fabulous if it is.
Yeah, so Nevada Department of Transportation has a pot of money that is strictly for safety type projects. And what they are going to do is allow the different agencies to apply directly to them for some of these.
Like a grant.
Like a grant.
And then we do it or something.
So like on the transportation enhancement project, like the urban and plumas sidewalk project, we were able to make application through our Metropolitan Planning Organization, the RTC, and, and receive priority for that. This would actually allow us potentially either to go through the RTC or to go directly to NDOT and then be the, and then be the managers of the, of that process.
Fantastic. Well, that is, first of all, I wanted to compliment you because I will tell you, I, I never see as joyous people as when traffic issues are addressed. So I could give you small examples, like when you, you red paint a curb and they can actually pull out into a road with, and see both ways. Or when you come in and put in a speed bump, or when you come in and put in the pedestrian flashers, or when you do a whole Watt Street replacement. You know, while it's challenging when it's happening and there's a lot of very specific, detailed interactions with residents, at the end of the day, they end up with a beautiful street. And I, I rarely see that. It's, it's city in action at their front door and, and they love it. So on that point, I have a few follow-ups to your presentation. You mentioned the urban and plumas pedestrian improvement and that is something that Alexis Hill and I at the county sponsored when I was still the Ward Two, when this was still part of Ward Two. And I know you had said you were looking for alternate funding. So there was a grant potentially from RTC and then this one was from NDOT and is that what happened? I mean, what did happen?
So specifically to this was a transportation enhancement, our transportation alternatives project.
Grant from NDOT.
And it was RTC through to NDOT. So there's certain amount of money for our location.
And we are going to be able to do it.
Yes.
It's fantastic. This is an area I think everybody knows, there's like no sidewalks and everybody's there and it's this dirt section and you're going to have to remove some retaining wall, push it back, change fencing on the golf course to make enough room to, to put the sidewalk, hopefully not cut down any trees, put the fence behind the tree if you have to. But I'm, I'm very excited about this. I think people will love this.
If it was easy, it'd already be done.
What's that?
If it was easy, it'd already be done.
Correct. No, it's going to be hard. There's the section along urban is not hard, but the section along plumas is very hard. So question for you. Recently at my nab, NDOT came and talked about a project they were doing to take down yellow flashing lights. So you're coming down Mount Rose and it says, hey, there's a, there's a traffic light ahead, better slow down. And I think there's one at the top of Plumas as well. And to my understanding, they came, most of us, I will admit, didn't really grasp what they were proposing. They were saying it would be safer if they took down the warning lights, that the warning lights themselves were confusing. I never found them confusing, I found them helpful. But apparently they did take down some and there was an immediate accident. Could you just address that?
I can't, so I cannot address the immediate accident. What I can address is, again, I want to be very clear, these are the prepare to stop flashing.
Yes, prepared stop, yellow.
Yellow lights before you, as, as advanced warning as you come into a traffic signal on a high-speed roadway typically.
Right.
And what NDOT was finding was that there are people trying to beat the light. And so they were, they were speeding up when they saw those lights coming through to try to beat the light to get through it on time. And so one of the.
And it's time that you cannot beat the light.
And so one of those decisions that, that was made was to remove some of those. And they've done that, it wasn't like they just came to Reno and did it. It's been rural areas all around the state. And, and I do not have an update for you in terms, I just have some of the background.
I will tell you when it came to the nab, I was not supportive. I didn't say much because it's the nab, right? I was listening, but I was thinking, the few places I knew that we had them, I thought they were important to have. They're on blind corners and those kind of things. And it looks like I'm over and I had a few more questions, so I'll do round two.
Yeah. Councilwoman Weber.
Thank you, me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear it all. Thank you for a great report. I just wanted to comment a bit on the traffic accidents and that sort of thing. No one wants to see one death, but what we're doing is, we're doing it as we can do it. You know, making the repairs, getting, getting the right things going here. But I think we have to also remember that there's personal responsibility in how many of those accidents by death were drug and alcohol related. I mean, we don't know all, I mean, we don't have those facts, but I don't think that there's a lot we can do. I mean, you have to keep working on the, on the projects. There are projects everywhere and we need to implement our, our traffic laws and, and what have you, but I think you're doing a great job and, and we also have to add that some of this is personal responsibility. So, anyway.
Thank you. I, I just want to highlight the good work of our E committee, the education enforcement and engineering group, because they are looking at those individual accident, the reports that come in, analyzing where those are and, and parsing out, you know, where, what can be done to improve our overall situation here.
Thank you. And before we go back to another round, I do think there, there is some information that I can provide from the RTC perspective on a few things with regards to the advanced yellow flashing lights. A number of the members expressed in written form, in verbal form, in meeting form, their concern about the removal of those flashing lights at numerous meetings, at numerous times, and NDOT still moved forward with their removal. I think while we didn't take a, I don't believe a, a position from the RTC, a number of the members that had them removed in their wards, whether it was Mount Rose or Pyramid Highway, were very vocal, or Sparks, I know Christopher Dare was very vocal as well, were very concerned about the removal and the frustration about that was voiced multiple times. So that was brought forward from RTC. Additionally, RTC has been taking a similar approach as the City of Reno with regards to taking action on some of the items that we believed we've wanted action on for years and we don't feel like the expediency or the action from NDOT was being sufficient. So we at RTC, like the City of Reno, are now looking at ways in which we can execute improvements, whether they're on East Fourth, on McCarran, on, thinking some of the other, oh, the, in front of Wooster, where there are NDOT roads and we've, and there's been study after study, but in action where we can take action at the RTC level to bring about change that we're not seeing from NDOT. So I don't know, is my time already up? Okay. I was like, wow, that was fast. But I did want to, and, and we don't have to have it here today, but if you could bring it back, I know that we have done a lot of improvements in project improvements, like the Virginia Street Corridor. And there were some hotspots on the Virginia Street Corridor where there were some, a number of incidents, either vehicle related or vehicle pedestrian related. I'm curious to get an update of since the completion of the Virginia Street Project, what we're seeing now. Because obviously there was a lot of safety improvements involved with that project and we'd like to, to have a follow-up on that. But thank you for your work to the traffic points. Would love to hear if there's any new and creative ways to get people, particularly in neighborhoods, to slow down. I think we have really tried every creative, every manner of improvement and enforcement and engineering improvement and you name it, and it just doesn't seem to bring about long-term change. I even saw one recently from another country where they, obviously the squeezing of the road causes people to slow down, which is, which is a good thing, where they had literally painted almost like a wavy indentation on the road, which was a visual sort of, ooh goodness, what's that? I better slow down. I don't know that that brings about sustained improved driving, but it was a creative sort of approach to try to address this ongoing issue, which clearly is worldwide, not just here. So anyway, kudos on, on this. I think there's lots of work ahead of us, but I thank you for the work today. We'll go back around, Councilwoman Mador.
I mean, I think when you, when a city, even an American city, starts to really acknowledge they've got a problem on their hands, you don't really talk about project, this project, this project. It's such a fundamental shift, you know, of where you're investing. You're investing capacity and congestion relief, you're investing in safety. And we've got a long ways to go, you know? And, and, you know, I guess eight deaths in four months and a week, because we had one over the weekend, are not there. But it's outpacing homicides. For me, that's been the indicator I've looked at since I came on in 2012 is where's traffic deaths going in relationship to homicides? And unfortunately, both are uptick, but this is looking like a particularly difficult year. But I won't belabor the point except to say that when the shift does start to come, we're going to have to think about land use also, because that's where you do get to the point that, you know, you're moving in a direction that your road demands and congestion relief becomes so, so great and we haven't really shifted in that and, and trying to advance, you know, the infield goals and the master plan. So that's going to be a, a pretty important one. And, you know, I'm in a new subdivision last weekend and still cannot figure out why we're building 38-foot wide local streets, gutter pan to gutter pan. No business. That is a street in 20 years that wants traffic calming. So why we went through and spent all the time on the land use zoning, all right, you know, code revision and still building 1970s new subdivisions with right, with road width, which is more road repair, you know, more, more square foot for him to maintain. I don't get it. We will get there because cities do. But I had questions for Ms. Van Buren, that, that $700,000 ad valorem, you know, I, I just, it's a term clarification for me, is, that, that was related to like, like public safety equipment, right?
It really can be for any equipment. It's for facilities, I have the exact.
Yeah, because the word ad valorem to me is not necessarily a budget area, it's more a budget source. Is that, what, what's the definition?
That's the source.
Ad valorem.
That's property tax. It's a dedicated property tax just for these purposes.
Okay, so a little sec, section of property tax goes for ad valorem.
Correct.
And what was that? Is that, and who put that in for that 700,000? Because I thought that was, when I saw it was for the police communication devices, I was thinking it was what we charge off of the emergency on the phones.
No, this is separate for just replacement of equipment for that, for the police. We've done this in the past at typically the $500,000 level because that's what the property tax was coming in at.
Oh.
And then 50,000 for the evidence storage, because they always need more storage.
Yeah.
But the revenues for that are coming in a little higher now, but it's taken some time. But typically, I would say over the last five years, it's just been the 500 and then the 50,000.
Okay. And I read the CPSM study, I know we have a problem with evidence, but I don't get putting a half million dollars on new roof on a building that we're moving stuff over to. I have, I'm really, that will probably get torn down. So I'm really struggling with that one and.
Thank you very much. We'll come back.
Yeah, okay.
We'll do one final minute after this. Councilwoman Mador.
Yeah, thank you. John, could you come back up and could we turn to page 85 on the slides? So I wanted to just look at this for a minute. This is a very interesting picture you showed. First of all, do you know where this is perchance or does anyone in your team?
I am confident that someone on my team knows.
Okay.
But it's an example.
I, I, it looks pretty new, right? Like a relatively new subdivision. And there were several interesting things about it. First of all, I wanted to riff or accentuate what Councilwoman Jordan said, that is what I want to do in this section, which is talk about traffic calming and safety. So we build these really straight roads and you've just done a, a speed study of veterans and you're going to come back with some results. But I want to point out to everyone, it's a really straight, really wide road. And the problem is it's built in a neighborhood surrounded by ever-increasing density, houses, apartment complexes, that, that the speed is not appropriate for that kind of living, where people are pushing, you know, baby carriages and walking. So one good thing about this picture is that I would love to see more adopted, is that the sidewalk is set back from the street. And, and I understand that it's hard to maintain a strip, a parkway strip with grass, but this one doesn't have grass. It has bushes. I hope at some point it has mulch because mulch is cooling versus rocks. But one thing, so I like that a lot. Now, some of our big developments don't have that and I would love, I think Chris is here, I would love to see this put into the PUD so that the, you know, especially like along veterans, I mean, the street, the sidewalks are up on, you know, the road and it's, it's not very safe. And I would love to see it where this is more of a standard, where there's setback. Another positive, potential positive here is that you have trees over the sidewalks. They're done enough, in my opinion, you know, for someone to really want to take a stroll and have some shade. It's, it's getting ever hotter. So the last three years, we've had three months of back-to-back, every single day, 95 degrees for 90 days in a row with no rain. It's not really an environment that people want to go out at any time besides 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM to take a stroll, right? But that, that may not be appropriate for them. So the last thing I want to talk about, about this picture is this traffic calming device. So love the speed bumps. This is the number one complaint I get in Ward Two, is that people are driving too fast. Part of that is road design. Part of that is slowing roads. Part of that is traffic enforcement. They call me constantly, could we get a speed bump? I've been told that a speed dip might be appropriate in, in lieu of a speed bump. And I don't know if we've reviewed those, I don't know if the fire.
don't know if we've reviewed those. I don't know if the fire engines can go over those any easier. Do you have any thoughts on this? I mean, I'll give you some examples. You and I have worked together on Ridgeview. The whole eight years I've been on council. We cannot stop the people. I don't know if there's accidents, but I get the complaints constantly. Different people, not the same people that you and I have dealt with. So Ridgeview, carrot, you know, these are things that are on a long-term RTC list, like carrot improvements, but they're not going to happen for a long, long time. But they're calling me today. Councilmember Duer, what are you doing to fix carrot? I, I don't see a fix of carrot here in this, in this project. So where's the carrot or the carrot?
So
Yes, please just respond quickly.
Just in quick response, I want to let you know our, our exceptional city engineer, Keri Kosky, let me know that this is in the new code, the separated sidewalks.
Yay.
So just, just for that piece.
Thank you.
Second of all, I, I have an opinion on humps versus dips, and I'll go humps every single time.
Okay.
Dips have other issues with holding water and
Sure. If we ever got any, yes.
And so there's, there's, there's some other things. The dips, we actually call valley gutters. And you can build those, could be somewhat effective also. But yeah, primarily the humps.
But most of the time, we're told we cannot build this speed. I mean, literally, at least six out of 10 times, we cannot build any speed hump on that road. It's an arterial.
Because of the primary vehicle routes, the, those, we, we just, vehicle routes, we just do not allow that.
So my challenge, if I may, Madam Vice Mayor, is just, could we get incredibly creative in this next year and think about, are there some other things, whether it's these wavy roads, whether it's narrowed roads, whether it's trees hanging over the roads, whatever it is, we need to do something because we, there's so many places we can't build these. Thank you very much. And to kind of, I think, wrap up this conversation, I, I too wonder what differently, and I feel like we have just really beat this horse over and over and over again, but the issues persist, and they do persist on the same roads. They do seem to be on the same habitual neighborhood roads. Is there contemplation or opportunity to have conversations on these, I'll call them repeat offender roads, where the primary access vehicle consideration versus the accident volume become a point of discussion to which is, which is harming the public more? In other words, is the fire truck not getting there, being 10 seconds slower, more harmful, or are the multiple accidents in the area more harmful? Is there an apex where we need to talk about these? Because I, I think that is something we need to more aggressively look at. Rate of return, I guess, on the speed humps. Or any other creative solutions that you and the experts, and I'm excited about this team, public safety team that might be coming in, to help us administer a lot of the things we have talked about and to at nauseam. I mean, there have been meeting after meeting after meeting, and we've identified the hotspots. We have, we have talked about the approaches, and in a number of the areas, they just still persist. And I feel like you guys are the experts that could bring us some novel approaches and effective ways that we might be able to address these. So that's the task at, at hand, and probably the message that we're all communicating. Okay, final round, one minute, Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, you know, having been here in the early 2000s, when the city did stand up its traffic calming program that really got kind of cut during the Great Recession and hasn't built back, frankly, in my mind, you know, because it's not a staffer doing it. But that staffer needs to be very comprehensive, also in understanding design, regulation. But there are plenty of examples of cities saying, no, we're going to put these calming devices on our emergency routes. And there's also fire chiefs all over who are fine with it, because they know they'd rather go 10 seconds slow to the thing at the end than having to roll all the time on the major crashes. So it's a no brainer. We just need a shift in our thinking from true operations, lane miles, to outcomes, and outcomes we want. And we don't want the one that's up on my board right now, which is, you know, how we're trending. But I really do want to know about this $500,000 roof commitment on the evidence building. That's, that's a lot to me.
Manager Thorne, do you have a response there?
Sure. We need to replace the roof because it leaks and evidence is being damaged. And so regardless of the timeline to move evidence and that function over to the Public Safety Center, we have an obligation to preserve evidence. It's going to cost half a million dollars.
Why can't you, or have you explored, because I didn't see any, you know, budget justification, moving it temporarily to other warehouse space, maybe selling that property? Because I thought, always thought there was high interest in that, and it's an area where we'd like to see some growth. Or moving it temporarily into the, into the fire state, the, the police headquarters anyway. And then while you're talking, where are we at on the fire museum, too?
Well, why don't we start with the fire museum? We signed a lease to sublet some space from the automobile museum, and the hang up now is with the group that has raised such a concern. They don't have sufficient insurance to function, and they're chasing that down. With respect to moving the evidence locker around, it is a secure facility, and so there are not necessarily a whole bunch of facilities that meet those standards. It would be at least as expensive to track that down in another way. And moving sensitive evidence to a construction site is not the preferred policy of either Public Works or the Police Department.
So, okay.
We're, we're going to, we're going to wrap this up. We can have more offline conversations. We'll go to Councilwoman Weber, then Councilwoman Duer, one minute each. Actually, I think, I don't know if you've gone your full rounds. You might have.
No, I, I just have a minute. I just want to suggest that we have a conversation offline because I don't know that mulch is the right thing to do in a lot of areas because of the wind, a lot of that, and it creates more problems with our, our drainage and what have you in the communities. So.
Yeah, thanks. So to wrap up the part about the speeding, what, what I would like to, it's very specific. You have 120,000 here. It seems like a small number to me.
It is.
So that's my message on the budget, is, is I was building up to just say, I really think we have to look at this number that would cover, if I recall, I don't know, maybe 10 speed humps or less.
Oh, yeah.
Five. Okay, so, okay, two. Okay, so speed humps themselves are 60 grand. So I just, I think we should up the number, and I think we should get very creative, and we should really make a big stride on this this year, if we could. Thank you very much. I concur. I think there's opportunities there that are incredible. Thank you for your work. Thank you for Ms. Kosky and everything that you do in your departments. You are all fantastic. So Trina McGoon, everybody, doing a great job. I think you're, are you up next, Trina? Are you tagged? Okay.
We're, we're tagged, yeah.
Could we just take a 15 minute break?
That's a good idea. Okay, we'll be back. Madam Thurk, we're going to take a 15 minute break. We will reconvene at 12:30.
Thank you.
How does stormwater impact a city? All properties in Reno influence the way stormwater impacts our city. The biggest impact a property has is how much hard or impervious surface, such as pavement and rooftops, a property has. Hard surfaces put more demand on our stormwater infrastructure because stormwater that runs over hard surfaces does not soak into the ground and carries litter and pollutants along with it into local streams. Reno has infrastructure like collection drains, culverts, and pipes that safely channel the running water away from properties and streets and into our waterways. If stormwater runoff from properties is not properly managed, it can impact our city in two ways. It can cause flooding of roads and properties, making them unsafe to use, and it can degrade our local water quality and the beauty of our city. Because if left unmanaged, stormwater spreads pollution into our streets and waterways. This is why it's so important that Reno manage stormwater with adequate infrastructure, staff, and educational programs to keep our city safe and beautiful.
Hi, I'm Reno Fire Chief Dave Coffin. Today we introduce Boston, our arson dog. Boston is our newest tool in investigating fires in Reno and Northern Nevada. He's the only arson dog in Northern Nevada. We're very excited to have him. He was sponsored by State Farm. He's literally, literally been training for this his entire life. Our handler, investigator Sean O'Brien, went back to New Hampshire for a month to train with Boston. And that was probably as much to train Sean as to train the dog. He arrived here in May, and he's going to be a valued member of our department for many years to come.
Hi friends, Reno City Councilmember Devin Reese. And I want to share some awesome news with you about the newest member of the Reno Fire Department. His name is Boston, and he's an incredible arson dog. Can't wait for you to meet him. Can't wait for him to serve the City of Reno. I'm sure you'll get, have the opportunity and share some smiles with him, too. Have a great one, Reno.
What is stormwater? Stormwater is water from rain or snow that does not soak into the ground and becomes surface runoff. It is not the same as wastewater or sewer, which is the dirty water that leaves your home after you have used it. Stormwater flows over surfaces like streets, parking lots, roofs, driveways, and sidewalks, and is conveyed into the city's storm drain system and flood control facilities. Stormwater is of concern for two main reasons. One is stormwater can cause flood damage where there are not adequate storm drain facilities. And two is water pollution and potential contaminants that stormwater carries. As stormwater flows over hard, also called impervious surfaces, it collects trash, sediment, and chemicals like motor oil and fertilizer that can pollute local waterways, such as the Truckee River. A common misperception about stormwater is that it is treated and cleaned up, just like your wastewater is, before it enters a river. That is false. The stormwater collected through stormwater drains and pipes in the streets flows directly into creeks, streams, rivers, and lakes without treatment. A properly functioning stormwater system can help prevent flooding and minimize pollution from entering our local waters.
Hola, bienvenidos a Carniceria La Chiquita in Reno, Nevada. My name is Michael Tregash, and I am the Yelp Reno Community Director, and I am here to take you on a tour of the amazing Hispanic nations represented in our community. We're here in the heart of La Chiquita, and we're going to take you on a tour of the Carniceria, or the butcher shop, where you can find amazing cuts of meats that are utilized by all of these people that live here in our community. So let's go take a tour. One of the best places to see all of these nations in one place is right here in the butcher counter. I'm sharing two different versions of chorizo and sausage that are common both in Mexico and El Salvador. El Salvador, this is chorizo salvadoreño, which is a version of chorizo, which you may be familiar with, from Mexico, that's made with red bell peppers, and it's a little bit sweeter, and the meat inside is a little bit of a coarser grind, which makes for a different eating experience. This is La Chiquita's longaniza. And longaniza is a spicy Mexican sausage that is, again, a little bit coarser grind than the chorizo that you find throughout Mexico, and again, a little bit spicier. This is La Chiquita's ranchera, a very thin cut of beef that very quickly cooks on the grill and makes everybody smile at your house. In the case here at La Chiquita, you can find a lot of prepared meats that are already marinated and ready to go. So if you want that authentic street style, Mexico City taco experience in your house, just come here and check out the case. Don't forget that this staff here both speaks English and Spanish. So no matter what language you're comfortable in, you can get the meat and get it home and enjoy yourself. We're here in the deli or the taqueria y la cremeria of La Chiquita Carniceria. And this is the place where you can find a wide variety of incredibly prepared foods, all made from scratch. And you can even grab lunch, too. This is part of la carnitas that are made fresh daily here at La Chiquita. If you're familiar with carnitas, you've probably seen them in the form of a big chunk of pork. This is actually a pork rib, because here at La Chiquita, they do the whole pig. You can find ribs, pork shoulder, las orejas, the ears, even las cipas, the intestines of the pig here at La Chiquita that you can enjoy. Of course, you could take any of these carnitas and chop them up into meat for tacos, but I think the best way to enjoy them is just like this. This is so good. They never make it home for me. This may look like a burrito, but it's actually a torta made on one of La Chiquita's in-house tellera rolls. This is torta la cubana, the veritable kitchen sink of tortas with everything you can think of under the sun. What makes this one special is the ham and bacon that La Chiquita adds to punch up the flavor. You've got to try them all around town to see how everyone makes them different. One of the best parts about visiting any mercado here in Reno has got to be la panaderia, or the bakery. You can find a wide variety of pastries, both sweet and savory, representing a range of Latin nations from Guatemala, Mexico, El Salvador, and many more, all in one roof. And the best part is, the price is only a dollar or less for most of these items on this tray. This is a concha from Mexico. It's a very, very quintessential sweet treat covered in sugar, but you can also find pan chapín. And of course, my favorite, which is the disco, which is a flat fried piece of dough that's covered in a sweet sugary syrup. It's absolutely delicious with coffee. And you can find and explore a lot of different things and feed a whole family for just a few bucks. Hola, bienvenidos a Guanajuato, Mexico. Estamos aquí at Tacos Los Campesinos in Basalikitzki to explore the amazing cuisine of Guanajuato with the help of the Cruz family, who makes all of this beautiful food from scratch every day to feed the hungry community their favorite foods like the pambazo, the now famous quesobirria, and of course, handmade gorditas and tacos. Let's go check it out.
Me llamo Petra Rodriguez Cruz. My position in the restaurant, en primer lugar, soy la cocinera. Y en segundo, también soy parte del equipo de los dueños de aquí. Mi esposo y toda mi familia siempre les ha gustado jugar béisbol. Y mi esposo dijo, vendemos tortas y guacamayas. Y le digo, vamos. Y mis niños estaban chiquitos, Alex y Lalo. Y ellos nos ayudaban a vender, mis cuñados, mis hijas, todos en sí. Fue como empezó el negocio de tacos Los Campesinos. Mi platillo favorito son los pambazos porque me encanta el quesito y la crema.
So pambazo is a torta, a miniature torta, choyfia, a torta. It's, it's pretty much the same bread, just a miniature. Guanajuato, we make a miniature. We dip it in the enchilada sauce, saute it for 30 seconds on each side, get it kind of warm, and then we mix it in with chorizo y papa, lettuce, tomato, sour cream, and cheese. It's a wonderful, wonderful taste. The barbacoa that we do here is actual barbacoa, the way my mom got hot. Guanajuato is barbacoa style. Cut it, put it in the big old pot, and then we let it actually cook in its own juice. No, no water added. It's like, I know birria has taken over mainstreaming, but this is actual barbacoa. It sits for six to eight hours, so it gets tender, tender, tender. And that's how we do our barbacoa. The best way to enjoy a barbacoa is on a taco. Obviously, you got to have the consomme, just dip it in there and bam. Obviously, you got to have the consomme, just dip it in there and bam. So we're going to talk about our queso birra here, which we know has gone super mainstream all over Instagram, all over the world. But we're going to show you our queso birra. It's a real queso birra. It's an eight-inch handmade tortilla with cheese sizzling and tons and tons of barbacoa. Obviously, we do after the consomme dip. We don't just make those tacos and add cheese on them. We make real queso birras here.
Y esperamos siempre la gente con mucho amor. La atención para ellos es lo primero, y aquí estamos esperándolos con Tacos Los Campesinos.
Hola, bienvenidos a Guanajuato, Mexico. Estamos aquí at Tacos Los Campesinos in Vazalikitzki to explore the amazing cuisine of Guanajuato with the help of the Cruz family, who makes all of this beautiful food from scratch every day to feed the hungry community their favorite foods like the pombazo, the now famous queso birria, and of course, handmade gorditas and tacos. Let's go check it out.
Me llamo Petra Rodriguez Cruz. Mi posición en el restaurante, en primer lugar soy la cocinera, y en segundo también soy parte del equipo de los dueños de aquí. Mi esposo y toda mi familia siempre les ha gustado jugar béisbol. Y mi esposo dijo, ¿Vendemos tortas y guacamayas? Y le digo, vamos. Y mis niños estaban chiquitos, Alex y Lalo. Y ellos nos ayudaban a vender, mis cuñados, mis hijas, todos en sí. Fue como empezó el negocio de Tacos Los Campesinos. Mi platillo favorito son los pombazos porque me encanta el quesito y la crema.
So pombazo is a torta, a miniature torta, choyfia, raba torta. It's pretty much the same bread, just a miniature. Guanajuato, we make a miniature. We dip it in the enchilada sauce, saute it for 30 seconds on each side, get it kind of warm, and then we mix it in with chorizo y papa, lettuce, tomato, sour cream, and cheese. It's a wonderful, wonderful taste. The barbacoa that we do here is actual barbacoa, the way my mom got hot. In Guanajuato is barbacoa style. Cut it, put it in the big old pot, and then we let it actually cook in its own juice. No water added, like, I know birria's taken over mainstream, but this is actual barbacoa. It sits for six to eight hours, so it gets tender, 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 and that's how we do our barbacoa. The best way to enjoy a barbacoa is on a taco. Obviously, you got to have the consomme, just dip it in there and bam. So we're going to talk about our queso birra here, which we know has gone super mainstream all over Instagram, all over the world. But we're going to show you our queso birra. It's a real queso birra. It's an eight-inch handmade tortilla with cheese sizzling and tons and tons of barbacoa. Obviously, we do after the consomme dip. We don't just make those tacos and add cheese on them. We make real queso birras here.
Y esperamos siempre la gente con mucho amor. La atención para ellos es lo primero, y aquí estamos esperándolos con Tacos Los Campesinos.
Hola, bienvenidos a Guatemala. Estamos a la Panadería Milinda Guatemala, and I am Michael Tragash, your Yelp Reno Community Manager, and I'm excited to introduce you to this amazing local business. We're going to head on inside and meet my friend Fausto, who's actually looking over my shoulder right now, and he's going to tell us all about this fantastic bread. But if you know the secret words, which I'll share with you in a few, you can get so much more out of this incredible local gem. Today, Milinda Guatemala is a family-run business with multiple generations working together to share the food culture of their home country. While it's happy today, it's a story that starts anywhere other than where you'd expect.
Yo me llamo Fausto Aníbal Salazar Solares, y soy el dueño de la Panadería Milinda Guatemala. Cincuenta y ocho años he trabajado. Porque de siete años, ocho años andaba usando stratos zapatos en la calle. En las cantinas andaba usando stratos zapatos descalzos. Y eso fue lo que me hizo trabajar. Porque no quería que mis hijos sufrieran lo que yo sufrí. Y lo he logrado, verdad? Porque ellos no han dado descalzos, sí o sí. Perdón, me encontraron a mi hijo y me pedían medio millón de rescate. Y yo no tenía todo ese dinero. Vendí todo lo que pude, me quedé sin nada, este, y junté doscientos mil dólares entre los días de encuentro. Pero asesinaron a mi hijo. Todo modo asesinaron. Ya me iban a matar a mí porque estaba hablando mucho. Me sacó del país pues que me tuve que venir porque ya me iban a matar. Tenía mi bien sin nada, con ciento cincuenta que sale me vienen, así como veinte dólares. Es con eso me vine. Con veinte dólares empecé a hacer el pan en mi apartamento, en la estufa. Pues a mí no se me olvida eso. A mí no se me olvida lo que he sufrido, y me gusta contarlo porque puede servirle a alguien. Para que se supere, para que trate la manera de superarse. Cuando la clientela entra a este retribuente, a esta panadería pues, lo que puede esperar si es de Guatemala va a tener un pedacito de Guatemala en su mesa. Porque el pan que hacemos aquí en esta panadería es auténtico de Guatemala.
All right, Madam Clerk. I think we're back. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Vice, oh, we're all muted. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. We're calling the meeting back to order at 12:35. And just for the record, Mayor Shivi, Councilmember Reese, and Councilmember Delgado are absent at this time.
Okay, we'll continue. Mr. Flansford.
All right. For the record, John Flansford, Director of Public Works. Sewer CIP, we want to go through, we'll talk about the sewer collection system, then Tom Wharf, Riz Wharf reuse, and the satellite facility. Just as our water purveyors take in the water and then treat it and then send it through their distribution center to the homes and businesses, we have the reverse commute. So we get to take the sewage that comes in the wastewater from the homes and businesses through our sewer collection system to our wastewater treatment plants. So we're going to follow the path of water in this discussion onto reuse. And then we have a separate item on the facilities, our facility request in North Valleys. So just, here's a look. We have a very, very large capital improvement program planned for this next year. And a lot of that, of course, is reuse, and Trina will go through some of those items as we move forward. But in the collection system, eighteen million in condition, twelve over twelve in capacity, and then nearly twelve in lift stations. So that would make up your collection system. The pipes and pumps of how we get the water to the reclamation facilities. We have the two treatment plants, Tom Wharf, which we share with Sparks. We have about twenty-nine to thirty million gallons a day going into that plant. We have the Reno Stead Plant at about one point eight, one point nine million gallons a day. Twenty-eight sewer lift stations, eight hundred and thirty-nine miles of sewer lines, and five hundred and sixty-five miles of storm drains. I just want to show in the upper right-hand corner our Sewer Storm Drain Maintenance and Operations Group. As we've added more lineal, or mileage of pipes, our FTE count has been pretty stagnant over this period of time. We did add a few staff in this last current year. And then again, same similar graph as we had with our capital improvement program here in the blue in the bottom. Since fiscal year nineteen, really starting to see the increase in some of these projects. Of course, a few of these are very large capital projects. Our ten-year CIP projected, again, on the bottom, the royal blue, the red, and the green, those are all in our collection system. So very significant work there. We also have some storm drain projects in purple. Above that, in the light blue is Tom Wharf. As you can see, there's going to be some significant progress, projects in Tom Wharf. The orange is Riz Wharf in the future. And then, of course, the dark navy blue is our reuse system. And so just want to point those out. I also want to just look back. We often get questions about how we're spending a lot of money in North Valleys versus what we spend here in the Truckee Meadows region. In the last eleven years, we spent fifty-eight million dollars just on Tom Wharf. Primarily, those are all rehab projects. And so just want to point out that significant amount of work. It's only in the last two years that will get us to fifty-four million. And of course, as you understand, I mean fifty-four million to date. And as you are aware, the bulk of all that is just in the last two years, and it's the Riz Wharf expansion. So only a million dollars before that at Riz Wharf. So just want to, just want to make sure that there's an understanding that significant amount of work in our, in our plants and the significant amount of work that we're doing in our collection system and at the Tom Wharf plant. So in our collection system, condition projects, again, kind of like preventative maintenance as we go out and do surface treatments on roadways. These, this annual program, we have our cast-in-place lining, cured-in-place lining, excuse me, for our small and large diameter pipes. Those are the pipes in good shape that we can line the inside of them and get another forty, fifty years out of them. We have remove and replace when they get in worse shape, and we have several projects here. One of the items I want to highlight is that we're going to be doing some removal of cross connections where we have stormwater going into our sewer system in a few of these locations. And so we're pleased to be able to mitigate that. In the Hillcrest and Glen Manners areas, we have four storm drain connections in Hillcrest and three in Glen Manor, being able to get those out into their own separate storm drain system and get, and make sure that we don't have stormwater flowing into our sewer and causing us issues at our plant during our heavy storms. We also have an area here in Chevy Chase where we're going to be taking sewer mains out of the backyards and locating those back out into main lines, so we, so easier to access and maintain. And obviously, these cause us maintenance issues as well. And then in Pembroke, out by Veterans Parkway, we have a section of a sanitary sewer main that needs to be upsized from an eight to a twelve. And so we're looking to add that piece into, into our project, into our overall projects. In our collection system projects, we had, as council approved, the Booth Street Siphon Keystone diversion project we're looking to construct in the next year. We have several capacity projects in the downtown where we're going to be looking to upsize lines. Part of those is where we take some flow off of one main sewer interceptor into another, but a lot of these are also increasing the size of our pipes for future capacity improvements in our downtown as we look to increase our density there. And then, of course, some money set aside for additional capacity studies and flow monitoring. And then finally, out of all of our lift stations, we had a condition assessment performed. And in that condition assessment, we are at the very tail end, I'm pleased to report. And so we have five lift stations here that are, that we're looking into either design and then rehabilitation. We do have one that has a capacity improvement at the par, our par-lift station section. And so that takes us through the collection system. I now want to turn the time over to Trina McGoon to go through plants and reuse. Trina.
Thank you, John, and good afternoon, Madam Vice Mayor and City Council. Trina McGoon, Director of Utility Services for the Record. As a continuation of the Sewer Fund CIP under the Utility Services, I'll speak today about water reclamation facilities, our reuse, and storm drain projects we recommend in fiscal year twenty-three. Starting off, let me advance the slide. Starting off with the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility projects, we have twelve projects identified, and these are based on the Tom Wharf Facility Plan update as was approved by the Joint Coordinating Committee on March second of 2022. The majority of these projects shown here are, are design projects related to plant rehabilitation and repair, and will provide plant efficiencies, cost savings, safety, redundancy, and help us maintain compliance with our environmental permit. I'll touch on a few of the projects, but not necessarily go through all of them. Get this mouse down here. Currently, replacement of the, let's see. Sorry, let me get this. De-watering building down here, this is number one on our risk ranking. A recent preliminary evaluation determined that, that a new building was more cost-effective than rehabilitating the existing building due to seismic and safety issues. The UV disinfection project will replace our current bleach disinfection process and will provide significant cost savings and reduce dependency on chemical market volatility that we're experiencing right now. Preliminary estimates indicate that we can, that we might see nearly a million and a half per year on bleach alone by moving to a UV disinfection process. And then the last one I was going to touch on today is this filter building rehab up here. And the reason for that is that that evaluation will need to be completed in concert with the UV disinfection project as the UV design is based on the effluent filter design. Next, we'll talk about the Reno Stead Water Reclamation Facility projects. As you know, we are wrapping up our fifty-five million, four million gallon per day expansion this calendar year. So coming up next, the projects slated at Riz Wharf include a metal storage building and an expansion to the administration building and some landscape irrigation rehabilitation. So let me get my other hand here. The, this graphic shows the expanded maintenance and storage building here and the expanded administration building here. Landscape improvements vary across the site. The plant has limited storage, and our talented staff perform a majority of the maintenance, rebuilds, and repairs on-site. So we're currently using shipping containers. And as you can see in this bottom right corner, a dilapidated trailer to store equipment, and the current shop is not large enough for some of the repairs. The metal storage building will then house these items, and the administration building expansion will house a dedicated server room with the required air conditioning for those facilities. Next, onto reuse projects. We've budgeted, as you guys, as this council knows, thirty-three million dollars in fiscal year twenty-three for the American Flat APWF project. Council's heard a fair amount about that, so I won't go into that, dive into that much deeper. But we've also budgeted fifty thousand dollars this year for the One Water Nevada Community Outreach associated with that project. We've also budgeted for secondary effluent pipeline for future expanded capacity and upgrades to our existing reuse system. So this graphic, the American Flat APWF graphic that this body has seen before, shows the, get this one. The American Flat APWF A-plus pipeline is in blue. The secondary project we're talking about for fifteen million dollars is a The secondary project we're talking about for $15 million is a dual effluent pipeline. So it would be parallel to the A-plus pipeline and it would be a category A pipeline for use with expanded, with, with the next plant expansion. The advantage of this will be cost savings of constructing the pipes concurrently. Okay, improvements to our existing reuse system will include remote meter vault improvements at the Mayor's Park and Lakes sites. These improvements will improve effluent delivery by adding system controls, improving the timing of effluent delivery between the different users and system pressure and will serve both existing and some future customers. The last topic here, storm drain projects. We've, we've budgeted $3.8 million for two projects, the Dry Creek Channel Stabilization and the Phase Two of our citywide storm drain master plan. The city maintains easements over Dry Creek across the Reno Tahoe International Airport. And the channel within that easement is the responsibility of the city of Reno. We are experiencing erosion and associated steep banks, as you can see in this photo right here. And, and those steep banks are threatening to undermine one of the airport's maintenance roads and perimeter security fencing. So this project will rehabilitate and stabilize approximately 1,900 feet of channel. And then the next project is Phase Two of our citywide storm drain master plan. Phase One included parts of South Reno that you can see here in this blue area. Phase Two will move into the central part of Reno and continue to analyze the existing five and 25-year storm drain capacities, identify critical replacement projects to reduce flooding, and identify opportunities for joint projects with streets and sewer capacity and rehabilitation projects. And that concludes this portion of the Sewer Fund, if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all the presentations. And I do have to say with, across the board for everybody, the backup materials and the graphics and the way you have laid everything out is really, really good and really helpful. This one in particular, I mean, there's a lot of meaty information in there, but you kind of distilled it down with some visuals and some bullet points that was really great. So kudos to you and everybody on, on these slides. I think that was great. Okay, a lot to get to, but we're going to jump right in if any council members. I love that there's page numbers, by the way, because it allows us to tag a page number and say, I have questions on page number, whatever. So we'll go, Councilwoman Bruckus.
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to continue my thought last time on the $500,000 for the police evidence building. But I would say that it's probably a good practice, if you're going to put a half million dollar into a building, to have a long-term plan for that, because we know evidence is moving out. So maybe at the same time, we should really think about what we're doing with that building. And I'd, I'd look for that information when we come back on the budget. I'm curious why we're calling reuse, and this is on page 90. We used to call it effluent management. Why are we calling it reuse? What's the distinction? Because how are we reusing it? When are we reusing it? Who's reusing it?
Well, we have reuse customers. I think we've, as a region, are generally trying to come up with one term that we're all using the same. So in our regional effluent management team, which is contrary to that, we're starting to use the, we are beginning, we are consistently using reuse. So we have reuse customers. It is really the concept that we're reusing this water and not just letting it run off.
Yeah, but we're, okay, I mean, I get that. But, you know, I haven't seen that the reuse proven up, in my view. You know, I've seen $88 million of reuse sales, but, you know, I'm still looking at it as effluent and seeing, seeing that. So, okay, I just, I appreciate that. The question about the, the, the main that's getting, the eight, the main down in southeast Reno along Veterans Parkway that's getting resized, is that for growth associated with the Daybreak project?
For the record, John Flansburgh, I'll go back to that slide. It is not in conjunction with the Daybreak. The Daybreak will actually get into the main interceptor before this. This is actually the flows that are coming out of, on the east side of the airport that are coming down Pembroke and then getting to the interceptor there on the, on the north end of, or on this particular case, because the arrow is to the left, the top of the picture, which is the east side of, of that intersection. Okay. So it's, it's actually our flows coming out of those subdivision areas, existing, existing locations.
Okay, I'll be looking at that one more carefully because I'm curious about the easements. And then how much of this 12,000 or how much of these cap, capacity improvements are going to go to sewer portions of southwest Reno that don't have sewer? How much, is it 12 million that you've got there? How, how much, how much are we going to sewer areas that are unsued right now?
So in our downtown, well, the overall capacity that, we have one project that's current for this year, which is in the south, the old southwest, which is the portion on lakeside that is taking care of increasing the capacity because of future development anticipated along lakeside. As far as work in, in the unsued portion or those, those areas that are on septic going to sewer, we have some money set aside for one of the street projects coming up in a future year, but we do not have any specific money set aside in this design year for that work.
And the CIP is how many years, five years?
This CIP is one year because that's how we bring it to you on a budget adoption. But we do have a long, we have a 10-year CIP overall.
So can I?
We're going to, we're going to move on, but we will come back, we'll come back to one more round. Councilwoman Weber, followed by Councilwoman Dorr.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say, great, great job, great presentation. And also, I wanted to share the fact that my NAB, worked for, NAB has been, has had two visits over the course of the last couple of years to the site, to our Riz Wharf. And, and others obviously have come, but it's always open. And John Flansburgh gives the best tour out there with his staff. And it, it's really good. So if you haven't been out there, hopefully you will go because I think you need to see all the things that are going on there and, and just view it with your own eyes. So I want to say thank you for the presentation, good stuff. I did have a question, and I don't know where Dry Creek is.
So this portion of Dry Creek is within the Reno, the Reno Tahoe International Airport. Let me go back to that real quick. On this graphic, you can see, I believe this is Pembroke and this is McCarran. And north is up, so here's the southerly end of the runways. And so it's this piece right in here.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Dorr.
Yeah, thank you. You know that I'm very interested in this area, so just, but I'm going to try to keep it to just a few questions. Just for your information, so when I started in water management in the 80s, we immediately started using the term reclaimed water. So we wanted everybody to use the same term too. And I was surprised when I got here that we kept talking about effluent, frankly, because I had been programmed for decades to call it reclaimed water. If you're calling it reused water, I'm totally fine. It's very similar, reclaimed, reused. But it gets across the concept that this is not something we're throwing away. So I think that's very good. Two questions for you. One is on reclaimed water. So we have the soccer fields at Pembroke. And I was just asked recently, again, what is our plan with moving forward with the pool to build this new flat fields at either Pembroke or Mill and McCarran? And I know that it is a reclaimed water site that we dispose of reclaimed water, but if it was converted into the soccer fields or the flat fields, we could still use reclaimed water. So I'm hoping that somewhere, you know, we heard from Parks a little earlier, but we didn't get into capital projects with them. We're, we're talking now about reclaimed water, and that's why I'm bringing it up. The other thing is that we've been looking at Mill and McCarran as a flat field site. And long ago, they were repaving or doing some major work on McCarran. And I asked them at that time, this is back in the, we'll call it the 2010 timeframe, to put in a conduit under McCarran so they could bring the reclaimed water line over to the flood project site. And they did not. And so I know that in order to get the reclaimed water over to that site, it's going to take some work with McCarran or routing along the river with some kind of different kind of pipe that, I don't know. Okay, so I just wondered, does this sit anywhere in your world? The, these potential reclaimed water sites that are recreation as well?
For the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works, I'm going to answer this question just because of some history.
Right.
So when we looked at the, the work under McCarran, when they were doing the other work, it was determined that the cost to Jack and Bore was not that much different, especially where it was at. So that it was, it was just deemed that it was better just to do the Jack and Bore if that project came in. And then as far as our overall planning, nothing specifically in this one-year budget is planned for that. But certainly we'd be interested as those go forward that we would, we would make sure that we, we can cover that.
Well, I'll tell you why I think it should be in this one-year budget. Because we're moving forward with the pool. We're going to break ground in the fall, is my understanding. And I have been asked repeatedly, there's a lot of concern out there in the community about how will that affect, even during construction, how will that affect the use of the flat fields? And what's our plan going forward? And I've said, we have a plan, and I think you had in Parks, a lease on the land for a while. There was tied up an agreement, I think that agreement's over. So I personally think the sooner the better, especially with the availability of the ARPA money, that we should be looking at these two recreation projects sooner rather than later and not putting them off anymore.
So I'll just say again, the Pembroke site is much easier for us to access and get that happen. The Mills, the Mill Street will just take a little additional work because we'll have to extend our.
I got it into the flood project budget to do feasibility study. But I agree that they're going to get tied up in looking at a levy. So I told, start with Pembroke. Like, let's, let's go do that. How about that? Right here in the CIP, what about it?
Okay, Councilwoman Bruckus.
Yeah, I need to tell my colleagues that, again, we're looking at a budget that does not expand the collection system into portions of southwest Reno. And this is portions of southwest Reno where septics are failing. There is a household on one of the President's Street whose septic is failing. I was on their property two months ago and their septic leach field was bubbling up onto their lawn and you could smell it. And there are more coming forward, very, in, in quick pace. And the model has always been, well, the model was in 1999, we're going to annex you and we're going to bring services in. And none of us were here, but that was, that was, and I was though. Planners did the annexation, so I, I knew what representations were made when the city exercised those powers. 2004, they went up and said, well, we meant you're going to have to pay for it all. Okay, now 2015, 2016 comes and a whole lot of money is being spent out of the Sewer Fund, but none of it is going into these old areas where houses may very well be red-tagged. And this was a family with, you know, a very hardship getting red-tagged. Fortunately, something's going to be done. But the theme that we can only do this when the roads get redone cannot exist any longer. We have a large swath of old southwest Reno that has to get sewed. And this is more of an emergency, more of a priority than expanding that $15 million line for due effluent. So we get, get efficiencies on sending the two lines. This needs to get budgeted, it needs to get budgeted out, it needs to have a plan for how much money we're going to spend on this collection system in this area, or 60-year-old homes will be red-tagged. Cities don't let that happen. And it's, it's going to be more to us when we do let it happen because we're going to have to do it in an emergency situation. And, you know, I brought, I brought this up for like eight years running. And I bring it up at budget, and now it's become highly acute. It's not scare tactics. I can send you to the lot where you can smell septic and I have information of a few others. So if we're going to continue to be a council that's not going to sewer and allow, you know, these sort of things, septic water bubbling up in streets and yards, it's a problem.
Thank you very much. Mr. Flansburgh, would you like to respond?
Yeah, thank you. So I do take exception to the allegation that staff has done nothing. I just want to remind you that when West Plumas or West Plum Lane was reconstructed, we ensured that there was going to be a sewer line in there for future growth as it came in. And so without that sewer line, you're looking at a lot bigger project. And so it's not like the planning hasn't been there. And yes, we do try to coordinate these with street improvements because those street improvements really help reduce the overall cost of putting in those sewer extensions. And if you're setting up a special assessment district or something for the individuals to buy into the system and they need to extend the lines in, then those costs are going to be much less if we do it with the roadway improvements.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Dorr.
Yeah, so I, I actually 100% agree, unfortunately. I happen to live in an older part of Reno and it has a septic system. And it is probably 60 years old. And the cost to connect is enormous, you know, it's enormous. It's working fine, but it's not going to be working fine forever. And I am familiar, my entire subdivision is on septic and we're like 10 minutes from downtown, right? We're right on Plumas and Moana. So what I want to alert everyone, I've brought this up other times, but we, we really need to hear me this time. I got a bill passed at the legislature with the Washoe County Water Department with Rosemary Menard. And in that bill, we set up a loan system to convert from septic systems to water systems. The county has the authority, the county has the program. We could be candidates. In other words, if I have to pay myself, I could pay over 30 or 40 years along with my mortgage at a very low interest loan, at that time it was 1% or 2%. I mean, that's the kind of system that we need to be moving out with the county. They have the authority. I got them the authority in 2009 when we got the JPA approved, we did a separate bill and we got the authority. We also got the authority to convert from wells to drinking water, same deal, loan through the county. And lastly, we got the authority to give grants for home elevation. And we're elevating homes in Hidden Valley right now. They've done three and they're doing more. So my, I, I, I think it is a tremendous amount, but there is a path forward. We, we have authority, legislative authority to do this program. And, and to my knowledge, it's not happening. So let's, let's get with the county and let's offer the program and give us an opportunity. And if my entire subdivision, which I know they would probably really be very concerned if they all had to like pay to repave all of our streets and our entire subdivision, which are in pretty good shape, frankly. You know, I think they would balk, but I think some of us would try to join up, let's say with Moana Sewer System or something like that, or something out on Plumas. So I, I do think there is a path forward without, you know, waiting to tear up a street. I, I do. We thought a lot about it and we, we paved the path. So number two, and so it's just something that we should not just think about, but we should actually go have meetings with them and talk about using their authority. So back to Pembroke, is there a way, it's a reclaimed water system, is there a way with ARPA, with this budget, that we could do the site planning even this year? You've, you've got a Parks Planner coming on, you've got reclaimed water issues, you've got the location. Could we, what do you think, Mr. Manager? Or how do I get that up on the eligibility list for CIP?
I believe that it's eligible, it's just.
Well, the timing.
Using, using ARP, it's just a separate process is all.
Yeah. But I mean, do you, Public Works folks have a thought on this?
Sure, so we actually are currently investigating the Pembroke site with the Parks Department. Just from, from a very preliminary standpoint, because as you know, it's located in the Critical One flood zone. So our first step was to see, what can we build here? And do we have the ability to place the required volumetric mitigation on that site? And in conjunction with Pembroke widening through RTC, we, we have a consultant on board who is looking at that right now.
Okay, because parks, well, flat fields are often built in conjunction with flood detention or retention type systems.
Correct. The, the issue with these flat fields and depressing them in this area is that there's high boron in the, in the native soils, which will affect your grass. So we're actually looking at elevating them a foot to mitigate some of that issue.
I see, okay. Well, just knowing it's on your list and you're working on it and you're doing Pembroke is, is all I'm asking.
Fantastic, okay, Councilwoman Weber.
Thank you so much. I'm so glad that my colleague brought up the county and the, the time. The first thing when I got on at Washoe County was about the Hepner subdivision, the issues with Swan Lake and the whole thing. So I appreciate this and I, I really do support however we can do that because there's many different mechanisms that you can do to get these people getting their, the sewer that they so desperately need.
You know, right now, it's just each individual has to go to the county and sort of negotiate something on their own.
Yes.
Fantastic, okay, final round, one minute. Councilwoman Bruckus.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to belabor and, and actually ask, you know, for another round if we could. But, you know, when we said, well, we insured when we did Plum Lane, I mean, that was an RTC project. It was a no-brainer to put it in, but it's for. I mean, that was an RTC project. It was a no-brainer to put it in. But it's for future growth. I'm not talking about future growth. I'm talking about addressing a tremendous liability. And the household I'm talking about had 110,000 line connection that three people were going to ride for free on them. So you're within the, you're close enough to Plum, you're failing, three people are going to ride when you make this extension. That's what he was being told. That cannot happen. We need a mechanism. We need a policy to go in, even if we force SAD it on a 5940, 59, 49, 51%, we need to get there. I just don't know if my colleagues can appreciate, I know they can, because they do a lot of constituent work, of a household with septic water bubbling in your yard, being told, you have to go talk to a contractor, and you're looking at $110,000. Okay? So it's, it can't wait for the streets to be done. It has to be done now. I really want to talk about the $15 million effluent line and the lag time, because we haven't had our sewer workshop, the lag time on this project being done at the end of the year, on the in-the-fence work, and everything else on the outside the fence, while the connection fees are still stuck. I'm not comfortable spending more money until connection fees get prorated. And I'm feeling we need a retroactive connection fee for the for Rizwharf. But I haven't seen a rate study. When's the rate study coming forward to us? And when's the Tom Wharf five-year plan coming?
For the record, John Flansburgh, there's a lot of questions there. First of all, when I say growth on the West Plum Lane, that growth isn't because we've got a whole bunch of subdivisions coming in. That growth means that we're, there's a potential for several homes to connect into that system, because that area is all built out. And so second of all, the question on the rate study and retroactive fees in one area or any area, please understand what goes into a connection fee. The connection fee is to pay for capacity that's available. And so we're committing to have that capacity. They're buying into capacity that's created. The reason that we have to bond for these projects is because that's the only way they're going to get built. And after they're built, then they buy into that capacity. It's not a retroactive thing that happens. So when we go to enact the connection fees, it's that cost to buy into that next 175 gallons of capacity for a home, or whatever that's going to be in number of fixture units. So I'm just, I just want to be clear that that's, it's not like we've lost money behind for this. It's like, it's making sure, having certainty going forward that that we'll have capacity needed at the time that we need it for the developers to buy into.
Fantastic. Any other questions or comments from council members? Final minute.
Just, I'll do one final minute. Thank you so much for listening to us. Because where you are working, again, like the roads, this affects people's lives. You know, whether it's the flooding out of the lake ditch or the last chance ditch, or it's the backing up on the lift station, for example, that you and I know about, John, or it's, you know, the septic tanks that we're talking about. You're at the front end of dealing with our constituents and the residents of Reno, and it's a tough job. And and I admire the way you're tackling it. And I, that's the point of all this, is to just hear what we're hearing from our constituents as the priorities. I mean, that's what we're doing here, right, is we're just saying, what's most important at what time? And our priorities might differ from yours. You, you as an engineer might say, well, the timing is this for this and this for this. And yet, the squeaky wheel that we're hearing might be something different. And that's, I guess, where the sausage gets made, right? So just thank you for listening and hearing us.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Manager, is that all of the order of business for today?
It's a wrap for today.
Okay, Madam, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Hello, Madam Vice Mayor. If we have anyone in the Zoom meeting who would like to make public comment, please raise your hand. And it seems there are none. And at this time, we have none registered. And additionally, we have not received any written correspondence.
Okay.
Until you're looking for a motion to adjourn.
Fantastic. Looking for a motion to adjourn. Second, a motion to second. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.